It is 6:01. And if we may have everyone's attention, we will call the meeting of City Council to order. My first question is, can everyone hear us in here and out there? Somebody peek around the corner, see if they can hear us all right.
Good.
Everything's good? All right, thank you. All right. If you will stand with us and we will have a prayer and the pledge. Lord, we are here. We're in your presence. We have many, many things to be thankful for. We don't have much that we need to ask for, but we do ask just that you be with us. Help us make wise decisions for individuals, for the city. And Lord, as we, as we do all of this, I just ask that you help each and every one of us to wag more and bark less. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a couple of presentations. And our first one is for Kerrville Kindness. Do we have some people here?
Bring them in.
What about announcements? Oh, I forgot announcements.
You can, you're the mayor.
Let's do, let's do this and then we'll do an announcement. Come on in, please.
That's what happens when you're mayor.
Wonderful, you brought family with you. Thank you. Come on in, come up here and join me. Just surrounding them, make you feel good. Come over here, please. All right, this is just a delightful Kerrville kindness to give tonight. And we are recognizing Zachary Reyna. Thank you. Zachary Reyna has proven time and again that illness can't hold him back. Diagnosed with an inoperable brain aneurysm as a child, Zach has battled through countless surgeries and treatments to work tirelessly for others, including serving as an ambassador for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, raising charitable donations through Macy's Letters to Santa Program, and Ronald McDonald House Coke Tab Collections. How many?
Lots.
Lots. Collecting toys and other items for Dale and Children's Hospital and the Texas Lions Camp, hosting an annual fundraiser for the Making a Difference Zachary Reyna Scholarship, which grants scholarships to students going into the medical field, serving at the annual Salvation Army Thanksgiving Dinner, and I've heard lots of good comments about that, and providing many other donations and services to those in need in Kerrville and surrounding areas. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Zachary for his unwavering commitment to serving the local community. Thank you, Zachary. All right, now I think we need to have a family introduced and who all's here. They not all be family. So who's gonna be our spokesperson?
It's just family and friends and grandma. And then we have his school nurses had and Tammy with Kerrville I S D as well.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anything you'd like to say?
Why would I give it in some people's lives?
And you have done that. You have done that. You have blessed many, many people and we wish many blessings for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here's the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was dark.
I didn't even notice.
Oh, boy.
All right, and next we have a proclamation. And are our D A R ladies here? Come on up here. Just line up here. Wow. That's right. It's a zebra. Now and then.
I'll get it right.
We kinda do this.
This is wonderful. Thank you all for being here. Oh, here's all of you.
I told you I'd bring some yarmulkes.
You did. That's great. All right, the City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. I bet if we'd asked everybody, they would not have known it was 235 years ago. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in Kerrville, Texas, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this 13th day of September 2022. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe you have a few words for us.
Thank you, Mayor Eichner, honorable City Council members, ladies and gentlemen. The Major James Kirch chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution thanks you for commemorating our historic constitution. This week, we recognize the 67th anniversary of Constitution Week. I'm Karen Robertson and I'm the Regent or President of the D A R Chapter here in Kerrville. Our chapter includes almost 150 women whose common bond is our lineal descent from patriots of the American Revolution. Any woman aged 18 or over who can prove this is eligible to join. We are strictly a nonpartisan organization. Patriots include men and women who have fought in the revolution, or they may have provided material or service or other support to the revolutionary effort. Many people think of D A R members as overdressed women in curls, sipping tea out of silver cups and saucers at morning meetings, followed by lunch and lazy afternoons of bridge. That's not what we were founded to do, and that sure isn't what this bunch of women do, right?
Right.
Good answer. First and foremost, we are a service organization nationally performing 15 million hours of service in the last three years, primarily in our focus areas of education, historic preservation, and patriotism. In this local area, you will see us serving veterans, honoring first responders, meeting needs of women in shelters or involved in local schools. For Constitution Week this year, we are distributing thousands of bookmarks and other items to schools, libraries, nursing homes, meals on wheels, restaurants, local businesses, doctors' offices, and maybe even a few friendly watering holes. We want everyone in our service counties, service, in our several counties to lay their eyes on the word Constitution Week over the next two weeks. As the new agent of my chapter, my unofficial motto for our next two years to these ladies is let's get dirty. I want all of you to see pictures of us not drinking out of teacups, but doing projects of service in our community in new ways. We are scheduled for a Guadalupe River cleanup in October and a veterans tombstone cleaning event thereafter. For ladies that want to stay clean, we hope to get involved in some of the new U.S. citizenship training now available in Kerrville. Finally, the Hill Country Sons of the American Revolution Chapter is also here in Kerrville and we do many active activities together. We are always looking for enthusiastic new members who want to be active in our mission. Please get in touch with me if I can answer any questions. Mayor Eichner, thank you and thank you everyone for your attention.
I might add, it goes along with the Constitution and being citizens. At the Doyle Community, the League of Women Voters, last Thursday night, had the very first citizenship class. They'd expected maybe a dozen, they had over 30. It's a long, it's a difficult, it's an expensive process, and we wish all of them well, but it was just so exciting to have that, so.
Thank you, and you were there.
I was there. So keep up the good work in our community and we thank you, thank you.
And thank you for this honor.
Yes.
Do you need pictures here? Can you get us all?
Squeeze.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we are ready for announcements. When we can get Stuart back in here.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and welcome to everyone tonight. Have a few activities. We're gonna have a busy weekend, this weekend and next weekend, so let's get right to it. First of all, we want to remind everybody that September is Library Card Sign Up Month. Libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and studies show that children who read in the home and who use the library perform better in school and are more likely to continue using the library as a source for lifetime learning. So if you don't have a library card, go get one, get your children one, it's a great investment in the future. All right, we've been talking about this for a couple of months now, but the weekend is here. City of Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department is excited to celebrate the city's incorporation and heritage with the Third Annual Kerrville River Festival. That's gonna be this Saturday, September 17th, in Louise Hayes Park. Free event featuring live music, local vendors, and kids entertainment. This festival aims to encourage people to get outdoors, be active in play. There will be some parking issues to pay attention to, so we ask you to go to our website or our Facebook page or our Twitter pages, they're all outlined out there. But a big event, we're really looking forward to it. Had great attendance at the past two, and I think this one will be even better, so. Encourage everybody to show up. All right, Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department is seeking booth participants and sponsors for our annual Family Fright Night Halloween event. It's hard to believe that October's almost here, but it is. This event will take place Monday, October 31st, in Louise Hayes Park, starting at 5:30 P.M. Organizations or businesses can support this community event by registering to host a booth. You can decorate your car trunk or your own 10 by 10 canopy tent to create a booth with a family-friendly Halloween theme. So we encourage everybody to try and take advantage of that. For more information, you can contact the Parks and Recreation Department. This slide is a little misleading. The image at the top right there, I know people might think it was from last year, but that's actually a Texas A&amp;M fan leaving Kyle Field last week. All right, and then next week, again, we're gonna have another big weekend. The 11th Annual Kerrville Triathlon Festival will be held, that's Saturday and Sunday, September 24th and 25th. This special event was established in 2011 when High Five Events out of Austin partnered with us to bring a long course triathlon to the Texas Hill Country. Brings a lot of business to town. I know that there's some, some traffic disruption during the event, but it's short and we encourage everybody to find out what the temporary street closures will be by, again, checking on our website and our Facebook and Twitter pages. So that's a big event, looking forward to it. It's great for the city and great for our profile, so. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I think you had someone you wanted to introduce?
I do, I think we have two that will be introduced. Is the Raphael Clinic, are they here tonight? Mike and Albert?
I saw Albert.
There they are. Come in, come in. Go ahead and go to the podium. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you, Mayor Eichner, for inviting us. My name is Michael Doveell. I am the President of the Raphael Free Clinic Board, and we recently hired Albert Voskos as our Executive Director. Our clinic started in 1989, 98, I think? Was that it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, anyway, I've been associated with it. Sister March and Sister Mary Ann were grateful enough to ask me to help them with accounting and those things concerning CPA work. And anyway, I've been with, I've been with the clinic all that time, usually doing their tax returns. But I've been on the board also for about 15 years. And I'm gonna let Albert tell you a little bit about what we're doing currently.
Got it. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Mike, and thank you to our council members and to our mayor. Thank you to all the audience. I would like to tell you all about the Raphael Community Free Clinic, and I need the community's help, you all, to spread the word. The Raphael Clinic is a free clinic here in town that provides free health care to residents of Kerr County and the six surrounding counties that touch Kerr County. We're asking for three things, requirements for the clinic, so please spread this word to get others to come to our clinic. Be a resident of Kerr County or the surrounding counties, have, have no health care insurance, no health care insurance, that's a requirement, and bring us a proof of your income. We use a sliding scale to determine if you can be a member at our clinic. So we really need help getting that message out here. We have a wonderful ministry right here in Kerrville that's started at the Notre Dame Church by Sister Mary Ann and Sister March, and we just want to continue living that ministry and, and living out their legacy of the clinic. So we need the community's help. So if you're a business owner, if you don't have health insurance at this time for your staff, or maybe they haven't purchased it yet, send them our way, let us take care of your associates. We want to provide good health care for them. And we're trying to do this in a Christian environment, and I'm just trying to learn the clinic as a new director. I'm trying to learn the clinic and live out the mission as well, and I'm learning that from our staff, so. Thank you all, and thank y'all for allowing us to share this today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great ministry, and they, they need and want clients, so.
Absolutely.
Please spread the word, and I have to brag on Albert. He was a student of mine at Notre Dame many, many years ago.
I had a good teacher.
So, thank you both, and good luck, and hopefully we'll get more clients your way. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone wants a tour or needs some information, stop by 1807 Water Street. I would love to slow down and show you our clinic and show you all the wonderful things that we have there. God bless y'all.
Thank you.
And then, I think we have one more to be introduced. I just think it's a good idea to bring some of these new executive directors in and let everybody meet them and know what they're doing. Anyone else? Nobody else? This would be, they're there, okay, Katie and Jennifer. There they are. Come on in and go to the podium. Tell us who you are and, and why you're here.
Well, thank you so much for inviting us to speak tonight. I'm Katie Fineski, the new President of the Kerrville Public School Foundation, and we're here tonight to introduce our new Executive Director, Jen Whitler. Jen comes to us from K I S D, so she brings a wealth of knowledge in public school, and we're thrilled to have her as part of our team. She's driven to make a difference in the lives of our teachers and our students in Kerrville, and just want her to tell you a little bit more about our organization.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. Our mission is to mobilize the community and its resources to further academic excellence within K I S D schools. So we support the K I S D schools. This past year, we've given over $805,000 back into the K I, into K I S D. And with that, we do it through grants. We have innovative grants, and those are grants where teachers think outside of the box. There are bigger grants that we award to our teachers. We have instant impact grants, those are smaller grants. We have a lot of teachers that will apply for those that will address immediate needs. We do scholarship, scholarships through the Rem Shell and the Blair Foundation. We also do Teacher of the Year, so we recognize the Teachers of the Year through our, at Everry School, and then we also boil those down to two teachers, one for the elementary and one for secondary. And all of those teachers do receive a monetary award. We also do, I'm trying to think.
We have a new program called Shining Stars of Excellence that honors not only teachers, but support staff in K I S D. Often those people are kind of overlooked, but play such an integral part in our school district and wanted to make sure that those guys were honored as well. We had a special ceremony at the last Tivie Home Game where we honored those folks on the field and, as well as our Teachers of the Year.
Yes, that's been great. We can't do this without donor support, so our community, we are super blessed to live in Kerrville. Our community highly values education, and you can see that through all the money that's been given to us to give to K I S D. So to support us, go on Facebook, like our page, see what's happening. You can go onto our website as well, kpsf.net, and you can donate online.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the great work that you do.
Yes.
We appreciate it. All right, we will move on to our Visitors and Citizens Forum, and Shelley, if you want to read that in and then give us some names.
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out a speaker request form and give it to the City Secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the City Secretary before the item is called or read into record. City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and there are no citizen speakers signed up for the Visitor Citizens Forum.
All right, nobody has anything to tell us right now?
Not yet.
About that?
Not yet.
They're waiting, aren't they? They're waiting. All right, we will then move into the consent agenda, and Council, do we have some items that need to be pulled?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple for, well, 4B staff has advised us we need to pull so we can indicate whether we're approving or disapproving it. And then I would like to also pull 4C, 4D, and 4F.
Okay, 4C, 4D, and 4F. All right.
I move that we approve items 4A and 4E, I believe is what's left.
Second, that's what's left. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. It is approved, thank you. And 4B is yours, Roman? Go ahead.
4B was one. Staff asked us to pull, we need to indicate whether we're going to be approving the proposed, well, should we read it into record first so we know what we're doing?
This is for?
4B, yes, ma'am.
4B.
Resolution number 53 dash 2022. A resolution providing for the city's approval or disapproval of the Kerr Central Appraisal District's fiscal year 2023 budget.
So we just need to indicate the resolution has a line that we fill in whether we approve or disapprove it? So I just requested we pull it so we can indicate which one and then vote on it.
All right. Are there any questions, anybody? Any comments on this? All right, are you, are we ready to have a motion? Did you make a, you didn't make one?
I did not make a motion, no, I don't have a motion.
Would you do that?
Yes, I'll go ahead and do that. I move to insert the word approve on the line and approve resolution number 53 dash 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Better passes? Okay, second, 4C, and?
First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement between Kerr County, Texas and the City of Kerrville, Texas for the provision of animal control services within the City of Kerrville, Texas and service of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library for residents of Kerr County.
I requested to pull this just for public information. County Commissioners Court, well, we were advised by staff that the Commissioners Court approved this amendment. This is an amendment, an agreement between both parties, and they actually approved it. Instead of extending it by two years, the staff said that it was just by one year. So just put it out there so the public's aware, we are only amending it to be one year from now. So with that, Mayor, I'll move to approve the First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for the provision of animal control services between the City of Kerrville and the Kerr County for services of Buttholesworth Memorial Library for residents of Kerr County.
Second.
As amended.
We have a second from Kim. All in favor, raise your hand. And it is approved. Thank you. All right, 4D. Was that, Kim, was that yours or is that?
Contract with Blue Sky Restoration Contractors LLC for the repair of the railing on the Arcadia Loop Bridge in the amount of $91,762.16.
Do we have, I have a couple of comments and points to make first, and then a couple of questions. Who should I direct those to? D A, would that be you? Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you for having me.
First, would you mind introducing yourself, so?
Hi, this is Chad Hurrell, sir. I'm your risk manager.
So I have a couple of questions about the amount of the claim and what exactly the involvement of the city is. So just a quick overview. We crashed into the side of our Arcadia Loop Bridge. The city filed a claim with the driver's insurance and they accepted full liability. And then sometime after that point, the insurance company ceased communications with the city. And so the city reached out to T M L for support, who is now subrogating the claim on behalf of the city. And this is now kind of getting into my, my questions. T M L provided the city with about $42,000 for the repair, and the city requested proposals for the repair and received one response from Blue Sky with a total cost of about $91,700. So is the city paying the full amount upfront with the $42,000 from T M L? First question.
No, sir. The, being that it's the insurance claim, there's a 50% depreciation that the insurance is paying, so they're withholding that 50% until we get the work done to, to basically ensure that the city has the work done and, and the insurance pays for what we say they're paying for. So as soon as we're able to submit the final invoice, the insurance company will submit or provide the other 50% that will allow us to pay the invoice in full.
Okay, and this is the driver's insurance company?
No, sir. We're currently going through our insurance, Texas Mutual, because as the statement or the summary said, the driver's insurance just went AWOL on this. They took us so far and just stopped, ceased all communications and basically are going to make us, or make T M L go through that claim through subrogation.
Okay, so are they no longer in communications with T M L either?
I'm sorry, when you say they, who are you referring to?
The driver's insurance company?
I, I don't know, I can't speak to that. I'm only speaking with T M L.
Gotcha, okay, 'cause that's kind of where my questions are going. Part of the summary statement says that T M L accepted the claim of the insurance company of the driver, who crashed into? who crashed into the bridge and is, and that the driver's insurance company is communicating with T M L. Just part of my questions is whether they're still in communications and whether the goal is to try to, the goal in the claim is to try to get the full ninety-one thousand dollars or just the remaining about forty-nine thousand?
Well, the goal of the claim is to have the entire invoice paid in full, which it will. The other, the drivers who is at fault, is at fault. They've already meant to be at fault. We have, with that, we have that in written documentation. It's just the game of the insurance plays. It's cheaper for the driver's insurance to just step back and go through subrogation and allow T M L go, you know, go that route to, you know, recoup their money. It's.
Okay, so, okay, so I think that answers it. So all the money is being, is coming from T M L. T M L's then trying to get reimbursed by the driver's insurance company to, to do that.
That, that's correct. It, it's just like if you were in a car accident.
Right.
And that person, other person's at fault.
Right.
Yeah, you.
I wasn't sure if it was gonna come from the driver's insurance company to the city, and then we're gonna try to reimburse them in that way. But now I understand it's going from the driver's insurance company to T M L, but T M L is kind of footing the bill for us in that way, 'cause they provide that, that service to us. So that's how we're paying for it.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on this? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to award the contract with Blue Sky Restoration Contractors LLC for the repair of the railing on the Arcadia Loop Bridge in the amount of ninety-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents, which will be subrogated with the private citizens insurance company by the Texas Municipal League on behalf of the city. And to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a contract with Blue Sky Restoration Contractors LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. And it is approved. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the last one, F.
City council meeting minutes, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, it's the last one from me. Um, if council wouldn't mind referring to the, um, printout of the email that I sent our city secretary today, I referred to page four of the minutes. So at the time, and I mean, you can read it in the email that I sent, at the time when the minutes were drafted, the dollar amount for the general obligation bond, for the voter-approved general obligation bond for a public safety facility, that dollar amount was, was left out in the original agenda item because we wasn't, we weren't sure what that amount would be. And so council that day, during the meeting of August twenty-third, was given the final copy of the ordinance, which indicates the amount of forty-four million four hundred thousand. So with that said, my request, and I'll make a motion for the minutes to be amended on page four by replacing that fill-in line for the money amount with the forty-four million four hundred thousand as the link, per the language in the title of the ordinance, twenty-two-two dash twenty-seven.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Joe seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. And it is approved. Okay. That takes care of the consent agenda. We will move to five A. Shelley?
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, block three, River Hill T H eight addition, and more commonly known as five-ten Preston Trail Loop East. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R two and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Okay. All right, Drew.
Good evening, mayor and council. As Ms. McLanahan mentioned, this is a resolution for a conditional use permit for short-term rental at five-ten, uh, Preston Trail Loop. Um, here's the S T R map. There's one other. You can see at the lower left-hand side of the screen uh, within this neighborhood. Here's the site plan showing the casita, and they do have ample parking as per the ordinance. P and Z also did recommend one additional condition that limited to the casita. And that's up to council's discretion if they want to accept that recommendation or not. Uh, this is a two-bedroom, or excuse me, two-bedroom casita sleeps four. Again, they do have ample parking as required. And on August fourth, planning and zoning commission approved it with unanimous vote. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Did you get any responses from the nineteen letters you sent out?
Um, don't, we did have a few in writing. Um, and there was some discussion at P and Z and a few in opposition.
I believe there, uh, we, I think our packet has one saying yes and, and several saying no.
About six, I think, opposed.
Yes. All right, staff, any, or staff, I'm sorry, council, any questions for, for Drew?
I'll just start off by asking when P and Z requested to limit it to the casita, is that because is the applicant only wanting to use the casita as the short-term rental unit, or are they trying to do both? Because I think the reason they recommended that was because it's only for the casita that they're really gonna be using for that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the applicant mentioned that in the meeting, that that was their goal.
Right, okay.
That they, they do live in the main house.
Right.
All right, Joe, any questions, comments? Brenda? All right, do we have a motion? Oh, that's right. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing at six-thirty-seven. And we will close the public hearing at six-thirty-seven. All right, motion, someone please?
I'll move that we approve resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-two.
Second. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need to include?
Do we want to include the additional condition?
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Um, do we want to include the additional?
That it would be restricted to the casita.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I'm gonna let someone else move um, on this one.
Okay. Do, this, uh, do we have, we need a motion with P and Z's recommendation of it being restricted to the casita.
If, if we want to accept that recommendation, right.
Yes.
I move we adopt resolution number fifty-two twenty-two, resolution granting a conditional use permit at this property, but limited only that casita as per the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission.
I'll second that. All right, very good. Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes. All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to six A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine. An ordinance amending chapter sixty of the code of ordinance of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the city zoning code by changing the zoning for an approximate seven-point-one acre tract of the Wallace survey number one thirteen, abstract number three forty-seven. Said property more commonly known as three sixty-five Clearwater Pass, Passo Path within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas from a multifamily residential zoning district R three to a public and institutional zoning district P I and providing other matters relating to the subject. Um. This is twenty-nine. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Drew?
This is the site of the public safety facility, and we did want to go ahead and, the city is the applicant, wanted to go ahead and rezone the property to public and institutional more for transparency to the public and those looking at the zoning map. Uh, this does include a minor change to the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan Kerrville twenty-fifty. Obviously, the public safety facility was not anticipated with any site in mind with the adoption of Kerrville twenty-fifty. Uh, so are recommending that be established as public and institutional on the future land use plan as well. And here's the current zoning, R three. Of course, you have public and institutional across the street with K Pub and the county sheriff's office and county jail. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval on August fourth with unanimous decision. Please answer any questions.
Can you just move back to the other map? Thank you.
Okay, any other, any questions, any comments? All right, Roman, you good?
I'm trying to figure out, what are we amending the land use to? Right now, it's transitional residential.
That's correct. And it'll go to public use, uh, which will be what you see on Shriner.
Oh, the light blue, kind of turquoise, okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Can I make a motion to approve? Let's, we do have a public hearing first. Uh, at six forty-one, we will open the public hearing. No speakers. At six forty-one, we will close the public hearing. And?
Now I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-nine on first reading.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we all need to say another yay. One more step, yes. Okay, we are ready for six B, Shelley.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-eight. An ordinance amending chapter sixty of the code of ordinance of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as a city zoning code. By amending the land use table as found within said code by changing which zoning districts a short-term rental unit is authorized as a permitted or conditional use, adding a new subsection eighteen to section sixty-sixty of the zoning code regarding short-term rental units. Providing accumulative clause, providing for separability, providing effective date ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are eight, nine, ten, eleven citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you, mayor. This is a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission uh, to amend the chapter sixty of the zoning code as it relates to short-term rental uh, units, where they're located, and the supplementary requirements for those. A little background, obviously, through the Kerrville twenty-fifty plan, short-term rentals did come up as a topic of interest. Through the rewriting of the zoning code in twenty-nineteen, we established the conditional use permit for multiple residential districts. Uh, so that we could start to kind of test the waters and see what regulations uh, or limitations would need to be in place. Over the summer, we've had several public meetings, joint workshops with planning and zoning commission and town hall meeting. And with that, captured that into both the zoning code amendment and a short-term rental permit amendment, which is the next item on, or yeah, next item on the agenda. Uh, for the zoning amendment, we are looking at the districts that they are allowed in. Uh, excuse me, there's the, the map that we've been working with. So removing the conditional use permit in any of the districts, allowing by right short-term rentals in R one A, R three, R T, downtown arts and culture, and mixed-use districts. And in the R one A, including a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot separation from the, any adjacent uh, short-term rental unit. We do have one small, um, or two small clarifications in the ordinance under section two, changing that to two-hundred-and-fifty linear feet instead of lineal. And the last sentence, instead of rental until, it would be rental unit. Uh, just two typos in the actual ordinance.
And what is that last one, Drew?
I'm sorry, uh, the last line of section two is changing it to unit for short-term rental unit.
Okay, thank you.
Planning and zoning commission did discuss the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot separation, um, specifically looking to see if staff could possibly address in a different manner to the front and rear of the properties, uh, 'cause that would impact more properties than they initially were anticipating. Uh, looking through those maps. Going through kind of the standard functions within our G I S software to find some way that would automate that process so that when we enter it in, it's not a manual process each time. Um, the shapes that came out of that with the built-in G I S functions were less than satisfactory. Um, did not really reach that separation goal we were looking for, either reduced or as drafted. Um, so staff recommended just a consistent radius, whether that be two-hundred-and-fifty or whatever council's pleasure is. Uh, so that would be a consistent radius around the perimeter of the property. Uh, I know that was some point of discussion with um, some of the public and P and Z. Uh, but we, we were not able to find a consistent method to reduce that without just reducing that number. Go through the zoning map.
Sorry, can you say without reducing what number?
Without just reducing that number.
Oh, just the two-hundred-and-fifty?
Right, two-hundred-and-fifty to a smaller radius, but that would impact the properties to the, to the sides as well. Going over the zoning map real quick, the R one A is the kind of bright yellow that you see. Um, R T is the orange that is between that and downtown. Downtown is the pink in the middle. And mixed use is the light blue that you'll see mostly south of downtown. Uh, so obviously that does concentrate short-term rentals to the core, core business area and the core of the city. Again, here's a little tighter view of the zoning map showing where those are located um, within that area. And be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, Brenda, you have, we'll start with you. Do you have a question, comment?
I don't.
All right. Joe, no? Kim, no? And Roman?
Uh, I have some thoughts on, well, not any really ideas, but my thoughts on the two-hundred-and-fifty radius, because P and Z wasn't exactly satisfied with that. Um, I in essence concur with that, and I'm a little, I have some reservations on adopting that type of radius. It's difficult. Um, and I sat down with both you and EA to discuss a couple of things, and this specifically too. So, we looked at different models, I guess you could say, of what we, what staff had come up with. Do you have any of those that you could show us?
I do not have those in PowerPoint. I can get those if I need to.
Okay, um, because P and Z had reservations on it, I have reservations on it. It's, it's a complicated restriction to, to apply that. And I think overall, when I was looking at the conditional use permit that we have for short-term rentals and trying to put those conditions and codify them into the zoning code, we've added a lot, from my perspective up here on the dais, that I wasn't expecting to be implemented into what we have is now this ordinance and the next, but I won't go into the next one. So just putting that out there, if there's another way, whether we need to get rid of it or reduce it by some amount, um, that's a policy decision that council has to make.
All right, uh, council, are we ready to go into public hearing? Everybody okay? All right. At six forty-eight, we will open the public hearing. I would like to remind everyone who speaks, this is only for zoning. We're not looking at a permit, uh, anything that has to do with being permitted. Uh, this is strictly zoning, so please make sure that you do keep your comments to that. Otherwise, we'll have to ask you to sit down. I'm sorry. So, um, who is on first? Please give your name and uh, just give us your name tonight.
Okay, Nikki Gaines and I, I live in the city. Um, thank you, first of all, for um, addressing the zoning issue tonight. And I'm also representing the Kerrville chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition. We do represent uh, citizens from neighborhoods across the city who have opposed the short-term rentals in their residential areas. You've heard from many of them standing right where I am tonight advocating for their own neighborhoods. Um, I would like to share, if I can, an additional one-hundred-plus signatures from residents who um, put their names to paper uh, to show their opposition. Uh, they want to keep their residential neighborhoods zoned the way they are. Um, and when our core team met this last weekend, we looked at this uh, ordinance and um, we made a unanimous decision that we could support it. And um, although it wasn't everything we had originally asked for, um, we want to be reasonable people, and uh, we believe that um, we can uh, accept this as an acceptable compromise uh, for the new ordinance. Um, we recognize that you have heard our voices in this proposed ordinance. And um, we want to thank you for honoring the words and the intent of the twenty-fifty plan to maintain our neighborhoods. And um, those of us who um, love our neighborhoods, and I'm sure we all do, the wording in the twenty-fifty plan encourages social capital. And I believe that by this new ordinance, it would do exactly that. Thank you, and we ask you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Richards?
Um, I said most of what I wanted to say earlier, but specific to this issue, I think it's uh, very difficult to define where those lines are gonna start and end. Um, and I do think there's a real problem with telling me I can do it and then turning around and telling my neighbor. my neighbor next door that they cannot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Perrin?
I agree with Councilwoman Garcia that we need to definitely look at that, but I ask that you delete the 250-foot radius, because I can see you guys out there with a measuring, and, oh no, you're 249 or whatever, you know, it just, it's so random. But again, if my, if, if it's a by-right neighborhood, then it's a by-right. And I also ask, obviously, R1 and R2 to be a by-right, mostly because STRs are residences, that's just their definition, they're houses. And we, if you, if you just completely hate that idea, here's another one you're going to hate. If we do an online CUP for R1 and R2, then you're not actually saying we can't do it ever in an R1 and R2. And I also ask for all commercial, because it just seems to me like the most normal thing to ha, to be able to have it in a commercial district. Let's see, is that the, is that it? I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liba Madra, Madri?
Pass. Okay, thank you.
Bill White?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bill White, and I live here in Kerrville on Oakland Hills Lane, and I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association in River Hill. This ordinance is a result of a collaborative effort by the city Planning and Zoning Commission, augmented by input from many groups within the community. In summary, it provides the middle ground I think we all want. It provides a middle ground in three career, three key areas. Number one, it maintains and protects from outside influence most residential areas of Kerrville with their unique culture, close, close neighborhood ties, and character that have been the fabric for decades. Number two, it reinforces guiding principle H2 of the 2050 Plan, quote, "It is imperative to put in place protections for existing neighborhoods." And number three, on the flip side, it allows STRs in location where they can provide meaningful benefits as a result of their location and access to visitor amenities, supporting the important tourism industry, and the upgrading of many properties thereby benefiting the owners, neighbors, and the city. Not only APOR, but the River Hill community strongly supports its passage and implementation. In a poll of our members, over 90% are in favor of this. As a follow-up to that, we too circulated a petition in a very short time, and I have in my hand that I will submit over 170 signatures. Our sister HOA, River Oaks HOA, reports that 100% of its 75 homeowners back this petition. In summary, this is a well-thought-out, a practical solution to a very complex issue that provides a win-win for the entire Kerrville community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Stroud?
I live in the River Hill on Preston Trail, and I know you've proved one already, but 100% didn't. Nobody ever asked me, and I live on Preston Trail. So, this is a, this is a done deal, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Candy?
Madam Mayor, the council, thank you for the time. I'd like to congratulate the P and Z for the work they've done. They were handed an almost impossible job. I followed this pretty closely, and it really was difficult to resolve, I think, and I believe they've taken some very good middle ground, which I think should certainly help the neighbors in the neighborhoods. And in our small village Glen neighborhood, 90% are actually in favor of getting rid of H, STRs in, in that neighborhood. So, I think this national figure, Texas figure of 80% is probably correct. So, I think you've done the neighbors a great deal of, of good, the P and Z coming up with this ordinance. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Paxton for the help that he's given me, certainly. Every time I phoned, he was most gracious, and thank you very much. Nice jacket, by the way. Sorry, I couldn't help it. And then the city councils, I really do appreciate the, the time and effort, and I know that countless hours you've gone through, and you've actually probably received some real flak from various people in the city, that you've come up, I think, with some very good support of the ordinance to date, and I'm really in favor of what you're doing, and I truly do appreciate it. I've actually worked with bureaucrats before in my career, and this is the first time, to my surprise, that it worked very, very well, and they didn't get in the way. So, thank you. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it, and as I said, the P and Z are, to me, they, they're my heroes now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Brooks?
Good evening. My name is Robert Brooks, and I live at 1416 DeGrassi Drive in Vicksburg Village, up behind Tyvee Stadium. I'm here tonight representing the Vicksburg Village Homeowners Association, which I'm vice president. First, let me say that we at Vicksburg Village certainly applaud your efforts to regulate STRs in the city of Kerrville. I'm singing here tonight, and I'm very pleased. I'm also here to tell you a little bit about what our residents think. They aren't necessarily all as involved as I might be in this particular zoning situation, but here's what they think about their homes. When it comes to STRs in Vicksburg Village, we, the homeowners, do not feel that Vicksburg Village is probably the most appropriate fit for STRs, because, one, we're a community of 55-plus single-family homes; two, parking's rather inadequate; three, our homes are very close to each other, many have zero lot lines; and four, the CCNRs, which we hold so dearly, reflect our opposition to STRs. Allow me to share our hopes that this resolution goes forward, and we are able to continue having a great community in Kerrville, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Colleen?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Michael Colleen. I reside at 2120 Vista Ridge Drive in Kerrville. Short-term rentals have become a nationwide problem and have the potential for becoming a major problem for the quality of life in Kerrville's neighborhoods. I support the council's efforts to control this problem before it gets out of hand. I'm also here to support the current proposal, because it protects neighborhoods zoned R1 and R2 and others, but unfortunately does not protect all neighborhoods in Kerrville. The recently adopted short-term rental ordinance in Arlington, Texas, which was held valid by the Texas Supreme Court, bans most short-term rentals not in a designated area, and could prove helpful to further limit the expansion of short-term rentals in Kerrville. It's stated in the city of Arlington's response in the Texas Supreme Court on page six, and I quote, "Contrary to the position petitioners advocate, property owners do not possess unfettered and unregulated rights to do whatever they wish with their property to the detriment of their neighbors and fellow citizens, nor do property owners possess a fundamental right under Texas law to operate their residential properties as short-term rentals for your regulation. I'm not an attorney, but it's perfectly clear from the evidence throughout the country that short-term rental properties can negatively impact a neighbor's property and quality of life. I would ask the council members to think about that, and think about where you live. Would you like a short-term rental next door? If you don't want to see a short-term rental next door, vote against any other short-term rentals in any neighborhood in Kerrville. Homeowners don't want short-term rentals to destroy their quality of life in their neighborhoods. Please do everything in your power to stop the expansion of short-term rentals. But I do say, most of my neighbors would support this, this current proposal, but we worry about what happens in the future. Since we just had a, an R2 short-term rental approved in River Hill, hopefully that'll be the last R2 short-term rental approved in Kerrville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Perrin?
Council? Let me start off by saying, well, first, I'm going to focus just on what I've been requested to focus, and that's the ordinances, the zoning. Let me start off by saying that short-term rentals represent 1% of the homes here. It's not like we're taking over, we're not vermin-spreading everywhere, we're trying to make a living for our family, okay? Having said that, I have a few things. One, I request that as R1A is a by-right zone, that we do away with the 250-foot rule as Councilman Garcia has said. Obviously, the Planning and Zoning Board had a problem with that as well. I request that you do that. Secondly, I request that you add R1, R2, and all commercial zones as opportunities for us to do conditional use permits. This is, because they are residences, these are residential neighborhoods. It's, again, 1% of the, the housing in Kerrville, and as I said before, I'm the one that's going to be building 150 new units, so we're going to create a bunch more, but we want to include R1, R2, and all commercial. And finally, please notice that all our opposition is the only side that's excited about the, the proposal that's been presented. It's not middle ground. We were told it would be a lot of give and take. It's been a lot of taking as far as we're concerned, so I request that you would keep these three things in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Karen Sides?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm part of the Kerrville chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition, and we've been working on this issue for a long time. I know that you're used to hearing from us, and I don't want to repeat things that we've already said, you know where we stand on things, but I do want to correct perhaps what might be a misconception, that we're not excited, even though we are supporting this, this ordinance, because it doesn't do all that we wanted it to do. We were looking to protect all Kerrville neighborhoods so that they could be actual neighborhoods, instead of having all of these overnight lodging businesses interspersed. We already know all of the issues that are associated with that as a national, even international, problem. We're not excited about it, but we understand that this requires compromise, and we see this as a reasonable compromise. We would have preferred you had gone further, so just kind of wanted to set that straight. We do support the proposed zoning ordinance as a good compromise, and will, it will help stop, at least slow down, the gentrification, actually, of certain neighborhoods in Kerrville, which has been happening, especially on the Lowry-Guadalupe area. There is a whole field of study now dealing with tourist gentrification. It is a, not just a Kerrville issue that we're seeing firsthand, happening right in front of our eyes, it's across the state, across the country, across the world, it's an international problem, problem, excuse me. And there are a lot of, of peer-juried research projects that are looking at this, this new phenomenon of tourist gentrification. It is a problem. Applying this order and ordinance, we believe will go a long way towards meeting the 2050 Plan, mainly because part of the plan says we do not want to displace residents or their, or their cultures, and replacing family homes with STRs takes direly needed housing off the market, which you know, every time we do it, we're furthering, exacerbating the housing shortage, which you know, which in turn brings up the rent prices and home prices, which we know. So, this is a very good, good compromise, we feel, we're willing to support it, and just thank you for your time. We appreciate all of the effort that went into it. I know it was hard, and we're accepting that we're not going to get all that we asked for. Thank you.
Larry Howard?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Larry Howard. I live at 503 Oakland Hills Lane. I wanted to come speak to you tonight, because after serving after over two years on the Code Review Committee for the city of Kerrville, this is the zoning issue we're dealing with tonight on this agenda item. And speaking of zoning, I think that the only thing that came up when we amended the zoning map, and I sat with 20 other people, we've met up over two years doing this, was coming up with STR, short-term rentals, was for the collection of hotel motel tax, the hot tax. It was never talked about of neighborhood degradation or being a problem. And being that we don't have a problem, where there's no police issue, there's no fire issue, there's no parking issue, there's no code compliance issues, I mean, I've checked everyone, there's no, you know, there's nothing anywhere, that we have this, this movement to ban these in these, in these neighborhoods. The south side of Guadalupe Street is on R2, and there's already STRs there, and it's right on the River Trail, and I don't know why we would add R2 into this list when we have so many in that area. I'm not in favor of the 250-foot requirement, because I think it's arbitrary and capricious. I think it can get in a lot of trouble later down the line. I think R2 is acceptable, because it's mostly smaller houses along the River Trail. I'm not in favor of R1 in any areas, I will give you that. But it is a zoning issue, and I don't think we need to just take it lightly that we come back and listen to a few people that have a problem with their neighborhoods degrading. And one of them told me one night, it's like, I don't know who my neighbors are anymore, and I said, well, I'm your neighbor. I've got four of these other places, and I know everyone that lives around me, and I pull in their trash cans, and they'll pull in mine if I forget. And I guess I would ask, how kind of neighbor are you being? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is the end of the speakers that have signed up to speak. However, this is a public hearing, and it's still open. Is there anyone in the room who are out in the foyer who wishes to speak?
I will.
Please come to the mic.
I have to turn it down quite a bit. Can you hear me? I'm Margaret Harrod. We own property on Loop 13. We've owned it for quite a few years, and we're trying to make it into a small, a short-term rental. I will say that Jeff and I are there quite often, and people worry about their neighborhoods. We've gone door-to-door knocking to introduce ourselves, and nobody wants to answer their phone or their door, and so I'm wondering, like, what kind of neighborhood is that anyway? You know, if they're, they're coming up here and speaking about us, but you don't see them outside greeting their neighbors. I have visited with all of them, and I have a problem with you passing this if, especially Planning and Zoning, has a problem with the linear speed, feet that you're talking about. If they're not happy with it, why would you go any further? They need to be happy with it, because it is a zoning issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there someone out there, chief? Okay, anyone in the room? All right. At 7:09, 7:10, actually, we will close the public hearing.
Martin, can you pull up the other PowerPoint? And the Planning Commission was discussing the 250-foot separation. Based on your typical block length, roughly 400 to 500 feet for most of Kerrville, the 250-foot would basically allow you to have one short-term rental on each block, and they agreed with that. What they were concerned with was how it would impact the adjacent blocks to the rear and to the front, and asked staff to see if there was a way to reduce the front and rear separation, but keep the side-to-side separation. So, again, using some GIS functions, so that it was automatic and not a manual process. This was the first version that we were able to come up with. Obviously, it hasn't reached the complete separation or the spacing that we've discussed, because it is directly to the side and directly in front and back, at 250 feet to the side, 100 feet front and back. This was another built-in function. Obviously, that's not what we were aiming for either, using the, basically a half-circle buffer off of each property line. This was about the closest we could come up with, so it's 250 feet directly side-to-side, and a 100-foot buffer, and where those overlap together. So, it's 250 feet directly side-to-side, and a 100-foot buffer, and where those overlap together. Again, that was kind of the intention of P&amp;Z, was to try to figure out how to reduce that front and back. However, this is still a relatively manual process, or GIS would have to go, GIS staff would have to go through each parcel and draw this out. Obviously, initially, that would be quite a bit of work. As we're adding a few here and there, it's not as much work, obviously, just a handful here and there. And then here's just the standard 250-foot radius, where you can see where they do overlap. Obviously, we can reduce that down to 100, and you can kind of see where that would, what that impact would look like for those adjacent properties. Typical lots within the areas that we're talking about are typically 50 feet wide, 100 to 125 feet deep. So, if you're looking at 100 feet, the next two properties would be part of that buffer district, on average. 250 feet, you're looking at five properties on each side. Just a little better explanation on what those recommendations were from P&amp;Z, and how we addressed it through GIS, again, with those kind of odd shapes. Couple of comments about commercial districts. Short-term rentals are not, because short-term rentals are considered residences, residences are not permitted in commercial districts. So, short-term residence, short-term rental units are not permitted in commercial districts. However, a bed and breakfast is permitted in all commercial districts. But that would be a small commercial venue, up to, I believe, it's 20 rooms by definition. So, to say short-term rentals are not allowed in commercial districts is accurate. However, a bed and breakfast is allowed.
Why is that, Drew? What's the difference between an STR and a bed and breakfast?
A residence is not allowed in a single-family district, so, or, excuse me, in a commercial district. So, we wanted to separate those definitions. So, the bed and breakfast is a commercial venture in a commercial location. Regardless of the scale, whether it's one or two bedrooms, or up to 20 rooms, it would be a small-scale hotel. Whereas a short-term rental is the conversion of a single-family home to a short-term rental unit.
Some of that has to do with the services that are provided.
Correct.
So, you know, think of cooking breakfast for the people that are there. I assume that's the
That's part of it.
Part of the thought process.
And that's consistent with state law and food establishment rules and so on.
All right. Anything else for us, Drew?
So, just a quick clarification again on, because there was some P&amp;Z comments in regards to the radius requirement and the desire to look at another option. Remember, the reason we got here was given the policy directive from both P&amp;Z and Counsel about the desire to try to reduce saturation within a given area, right? We coupled that with a balance of trying to provide ease of clarification, both to the general public and where they're able to look at investing properties and what the rights are on those properties. And so, this provided a very clear process to draw a very linear line out from a property and draw around that, which is very clearly defined by GIS and other entities, versus complicated language and a complicated calculation on some type of ellipse or other shape that just lacks clarity, quite frankly. And so, the staff recommendation would be if 250 is not the correct radius for reducing the saturation, please give us a different number.
Can you tell me, so, out of all of the depictions we looked at, this is the, this is the version that you're recommending through this zoning?
This is the staff recommendation.
And so, all of these, in this example, are all overlapping? So...
So, they're not actually overlapping. It's a good point. So, the top two, those two radiuses touch.
Yes.
But both of those would be allowed. It's only when you get down to the bottom example, for instance, where the radius actually goes through the other property.
Okay.
I appreciate you asking that question, because that's an important clarification. The radius buffers can absolutely touch and still allow for the use.
Okay.
Luckily, we have the technology. Technology has advanced, and we won't have to be using a measuring tape out there to be measuring the 250 feet or whatever it is we go with. But we have the capacity to do that
Right.
with our system.
Let me make sure I understand. The top two properties where the ovals intersect, those are allowed. How about the next two, the both on Prescott, ones on Prescott, and oh, ones on Prescott?
Right, these two.
Those would be allowed.
So, those two would be allowed because they are more than, because that blue radius is 250 feet.
So, it just can't intersect the lot.
So, where these two, the circle overlaps onto the parcel.
Onto the parcel.
Whichever one of those came first would be permitted, the second one would not.
Same with the bottom example.
That's correct.
Essentially, the blue line crosses the red line.
So, the, and these plots are something that the GIS folks can easily calculate without measuring tapes.
Okay, other questions, Counsel? Comments?
Now, this is an ordinance, if I remember right, and it has two readings, correct? So, if there were changes to be made, they could also still be made before the second reading. Is that correct?
Could we change? We could change, but they have to be, but it has to be correct, I mean materially correct, right? I mean, if we wanted to go and change something that had to do with specific zones themselves, are we able to do that on a second reading? Or does that change the material portion of the ordinance? Does it change it too much?
Just whatever's in
Any amendments that
Whatever's in the ordinance and whatever the title, I guess, has in it relates to that.
I would say the more changes you make, substantive changes between the first and second reading, you know, the more there's an argument that you've really
Changed it.
Changed an ordinance so that you're not really reading the same one both times. And so, I would just caution you, to the extent, well, to the extent that you know, kind of consensus-wise, where you don't want to go over it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If there was something that said, oh, well, maybe we should include or exclude a zone, that I would think that would be a substantive change that might be, that might be a pretty big piece.
I agree with that.
And if everyone agreed to it, yes, it would be.
Right. Well, but I
Do you have any thoughts on including or excluding something?
I guess I would say that, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm just not at a level of comfort right now with, you know, especially the one that's coming before us next. But, and I know they don't have to specifically interplay together, but my level of comfort with where we are in this process, I like to have a little bit more comfort. I don't know what other word to use than what I have right now. So, I'm just uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable at this point, is all I can say.
Is there one part of it that you're most uncomfortable with, or is it all of it that you're uncomfortable with? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
You're not. It's a good question. I would just say that there are enough questions that, in my mind, I don't, I know right now that I don't feel unless someone tells me differently on the next one, that I'm going to be able to move forward and approve it as it is. I also wrote a lot of notes, but I don't know that I could go through personally and line through everything and come up with a draft that I would be personally satisfied with tonight. And because these are, these pieces, while not, while you can pass one without the other, I guess I would just say that, that I would prefer to pass them together. So, that's, I guess
If they're interrelated and
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I agree, because if we change a provision here, we probably arguably need to change a provision in this second ordinance regarding the permitting process, because it has similar language in it, I believe, right?
The only consistency is the buffer.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, there's that.
Joe, anything?
Yeah, I want the public to understand, and I don't know, I'm sure you already understand this, but I want to make sure it's stated. The five of us don't get together at the coffee shop and decide things. We don't talk to each other. This is the only chance that we actually get to discuss this, which is the law. But also, it makes it awkward when we've asked staff to come up with an ordinance, and then, as we're discussing it, and this is no reflection on anyone here, but we have a difficult time making substantive changes in public. It's like, it's like you're getting to watch the sausage being made. And it's an awkward, it's an awkward process. For the five of us, I mean, we have heard everyone. We have carefully listened to everyone. Some of you we agree with, and some of you don't agree with. Some of us on the council agree with each other, some of us don't. But talking about it in public is what we must do. We've had a town hall, we've had numerous hearings. We have discussed this long and short. I wish that we could proceed at least with one of these, not to make anyone uncomfortable. And if the buffer's a problem, let's strike the buffer. But if we don't do anything, what's our next step? Do we have another hearing? Do we have another town hall? Do we have, what do we do? Do we appoint a committee? Do we go on vacation? What do we do? Vacation is, I'll second the vacation. But anyway, I want you all to understand, it's complicated for us in that we don't have a lot of preconceived notions on this. I've heard from people I've known for 30 and 40 years that I respect. And I've heard from people that I've only known through this process. And so, as we're up here stammering and trying to figure out what is best for this town that we all love, please know that we've asked the staff to do something, and they've come back with something, and that's the first step. And don't fault the staff, we're the ones that asked them to do it. We're the ones that said, we need this, this, and this. And this is what they've come back with. This is our first, this is our first swing. I don't have a lot of discomfort with this part, this ordinance. If the buffer's a problem, strike the buffer. But the next one has, I have some issues.
Sure, sure.
Okay. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry if I spoke too
No, it was good.
And my biggest issue is the private property rights. And to speak to what one of our audience members talked about, why is it fair to have one here but not one there if they're both in the same zone? I have a problem with that. If I had it my way, which that may or may not happen, I would like to see STRs only done in zones where they're allowed by right. And then, where they are allowed by right, if they get taken over by STRs, that's just the way it goes. Some will, you know, fail because, you know, they're cosmetically not up to par or whatever. But I think if the zone says that they're allowed, then they should be allowed. And the zones where they're not allowed, there should be no CUPs. And that's how I feel about the situation.
Well, what do you feel about the zones that are being proposed?
I am, I think it's a good start. I think I could live with that.
So, there's two provisions in basically one section that we're looking at. We're amending the land use table, and then we're doing the separation distance. So, taking the two apart real quick, do we all agree on the land use table that's been amended on where short-term rentals and bed and breakfast ends can be placed?
I agree with that.
That's the first thing I think we need to establish first, because I think the buffer is still in question. So, if we can do that, does anybody have reservations or hesitations about it? Okay, so then I think we're now left with the distance requirement, the buffer, 200 feet. And I think we need to figure out whether we're going to do away with that, or whether we're going to decrease it. I'm, I think I'm in favor of just doing away with it. If we're going to allow it in the zone, it should be allowed in the zone consistently for everybody.
I agree. I do.
Fortunately, I know some of my constituents are going to agree with me and disagree with me on that.
I know.
Joe?
I think in order to be fair for everybody, it's consistent.
The thing about the buffer, I think originally, if Mr. Paxton, if I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you said you were concerned with having an entire street filled up with them.
Right.
And if it's allowed in that zone, and you bought property in that zone, and you know it's allowed, why can't you have it?
I think one thing to mention is there was a Code Review Committee that spent a lot of time on the zones. I mean, I feel, I very much feel like, Joe, I wish I could pick up the phone and call each and every one of you and say, hey, let's talk about it. And we can't do that. So, this is our only place to talk about it. But in that Code Review Committee, that's what they do talk, they did. And that's when all of these were put in place. That's where that came from.
And I'm on the Code Review Committee, so to speak to what Mr. Howard said, he's absolutely right. The discussion on short-term rentals was strictly about encapsulating, you know, encapsulating the use and being able to apply property taxes or hot taxes, I should say, to that. This is my recollection as well.
In my short time on the council, what I've observed is everybody loves an SCR until it's on your street. And then, all of a sudden, it's the devil incarnate.
You're right.
So, Mayor, then, I guess, in council, I guess we have possibly a motion that we can make to approve the ordinance and strike Section 2, which is the buffer. Counsel, let's impact out, unless there's any further discussion.
Anybody, any other thoughts or want to share?
Mike, what do you think? If there's a motion to that effect, have we drastically changed the
I think you're fine. I mean, we presented you kind of a
Then I'd like to second that motion.
So, okay, so I'll make, I'll formally make a motion for the minutes. Yes, it'll be to approve ordinance number 2022-28 on first reading with an amendment to strike Section 2 on page 2 of the ordinance.
On page what, I'm sorry?
Page 2. Section 2, which is located on page 2 of the ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Brenda, second, Seth.
Before the vote, so that essentially, what the motion is, is to allow for by-right short-term rentals within the R1A zones, as well as RT and the existing by-right zones. Is that correct?
Yes.
Prohibit from the others that are prohibited.
Right. We're not changing Prohibiting from R1 and R2.
Correct.
And commercial, that's existing.
We're not changing the proposed land use table that's in our package.
Correct. Okay.
All right. Any other comments before we call for a vote? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, Counsel.
Now for the final one.
All right. We will move on.
Ordinance number 2022-30, an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Businesses of the City's Code of Ordinances by adopting a new Article 6, Bed and Breakfast Ends in Short-Term Rental Units, requiring permitting and inspection for bed and breakfast ends in short-term rental units containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and separability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have six citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Drew, you're our man again.
This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 for businesses to allow and require a short-term rental permit and a bed and breakfast permit. Again, those in their associated zoning districts. We did have the workshop earlier today to kind of dig into the initial details of this. Martin, can you pull up that PowerPoint for 7A? So, this permit will establish a permit for short-term rentals to operate within the city, both non-conforming, those with a conditional use permit, and those moving forward. All will be required a permit. As drafted, it is an annual permit that would expire the end of the calendar year, each year. So, it would have a renewal. That's the wrong PowerPoint. Sorry, Martin, can you grab the one from the workshop? Sorry, Martin, can you grab the one from the workshop?
Is Mark an imaginary friend?
Wizard.
Wizard behind the scene, he keeps this whole thing running.
Actually, I wanted to make a comment. That tie you wore last time would be very appropriate this week.
This is my other school, this is the Shriner tartan.
There we go, Shriner. Last meeting, he wore a Texas Tech tie. And of all the major schools in our state, that was the only one that had a good week.
I'll go through this for the public. Martin, that's the right one. Nope, maybe not.
Shriner tartan, that looks good.
Thank you. This has a little more background information on how the staff will implement this ordinance once adopted. But I'll just kind of go through this. This is what was presented at the workshop. Again, kind of giving notification of this ordinance once it's adopted to the public, what our permit application process looks like, how the inspection process would go through the short-term rental permit itself, and then how violations or compliance complaints. We had a big discussion on that as well at the workshop. So some of the key pieces we would use for notification, obviously, we do have the conditional use permit list. Our finance department has the list on the hotel occupancy tax. And the public information office, through press release, social media, and so on, just to make sure we're getting that information out there. Here's the website, we would add a separate page to the website for that information of what's required for the permit and the process to go through that. Here's, of course, the background of the MyGovernment Online database and software. This is the staff side, what that application would look like as we're processing those. Again, through the joint workshops and town hall, it was requested that we look at inspections of the property to make sure life safety codes are met, whether it be smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, ingress and egress to the property, parking consistent with the zoning code, and then compliance with building codes and the posting requirements within the permit license or permit ordinance. An example of what that permit might look like. Again, it does have an annual expiration. But there's been a bit of discussion between the short-term rental permit and the previous conditional use permits. The conditional use permits do run with the land, they are a zoning entitlement, regardless of the ownership of the property.
Can I ask a question now? Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay. What about the non-conformities? I know that's a big one. So we don't consider that to be a non-conforming use if it's allowed through a conditional use permit, is that correct? Because there's some concerns about whether new permits can be issued for people that have a conditional use permit, but the zone would no longer allow for that if that will strip their permit or strip their use if they need to make improvements.
There's several layers there to that. The current non-conforming properties, those that were in place prior to the current zoning code before September 2019.
That's considered non-conforming.
Non-conforming or grandfathered. Those are still allowed by right, or still allowed as grandfathered properties so long as the use continues, regardless of ownership. One with a conditional use permit pursuant to the code amendment we just made, if that carries forward, there would be no more new conditional use permits. The existing conditional use permits remain in place. They run with the land, but they are treated as non-conforming, unless they comply with the new code.
Meaning?
So for example, the CUPs that have been approved in R1 and R2 would be treated as non-conforming properties. The non-conforming status and the conditional use permit could expire if they stopped using it as a short-term rental property. However, if they continue using it as a short-term rental property and the property sells, the new owner would have that zoning right to continue.
But what about making improvements and changing the footprint of the property?
The zoning code does not allow expansion of a non-conforming property.
Yeah.
And that's consistent with all non-conforming uses, whether it's short-term rental or not.
So if I have, according to the way this is written, if I have a conditional use permit and I am in an R1 and moving forward, I want to add or expand a bathroom, create a larger laundry room, like whatever. If I did anything to expand the footprint and wanted to do that, what would happen?
You would not be allowed that permit. That does not mean that they can't upkeep the property.
Right.
They can bring it up to code.
You can't change the footprint.
But you could not expand it, correct. With those non-conforming properties, the new owner, through the amendments that we have before you with the original draft to the draft that's before you, the new owner is required to apply for a new short-term rental permit. The permit itself stays with the operator because it's an operator's permit to operate the short-term rental. But the conditional use permit would carry over.
Right. I'm just concerned with that idea. I understand that it has to conform to what the codes are, but I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint, if I have something that I was given as a conditional use and then we change something and I want to make an improvement to my property that expands the footprint, it's still being used for residential people to occupy. I just, I find that problematic.
I'm confused, so can... I'm going to say something and you tell me whether my interpretation of this is correct or not. All conditional use permits today or as of the date of the effective date of this ordinance should pass, second reading as well. All conditional use permits for short-term rentals and all of those that were allowed by right, are they going to have to follow this new process?
Yes, all short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts in the city of Kerrville going forward, should you all approve it, would need to be permitted.
My question is really about the conditional use because it's now a non-conforming, and so we've got regs on that.
Well, and they're going to be forced to go with this new process. All grandfathered properties are going to be forced to do that, right?
All properties would need to be registered and permitted, correct. Regardless of...
The reason I'm confused is because when we were talking about it in the workshop, I thought that was a no to my question on that. Okay. So just so we're clear, all grandfathered as of the date of the effective date of the ordinance will have to follow the new ordinance in effect of April 1 of next year is what we have here. Okay. That's where I got confused in the workshops, I wanted to clarify that, okay?
Sorry if we were unclear about that.
That's all right, thank you.
Drew, anything else?
Let me make sure, Ms. Clarkson, let me make sure I understand your question. I'm rereading the code. We have a specific section of code that speaks to previously granted conditional use permits.
Okay.
And if they code...
Previously granted conditional use permit, where that is no longer available.
So we have a provision specifically that speaks to that.
Okay, what does that say?
It's not short. Let me review that and then I'll get back to you. Because again, that's a major zoning code change, regardless of the permit discussion.
That's fair.
So I'll circle back with council on that.
Absolutely.
The non-conforming ones, there's another section of the code.
Well, that's what I...yeah, and it was just isn't being treated as non-conforming. But I mean, you can also say that if they're allowed to apply for a permit, are they really...
Right.
If they have the...
I see what you're saying.
As far as the land use, as far as the zoning.
I understand, I just, I have, I just, I don't like that.
Can you give me the section number that you're looking at? That way I can be on the same page of what we're referring to when we look at it.
60-123.
Thank you.
And 60-110 is the start of the non-conforming chapter.
Thank you.
So again, that's how the conditional use permit and the non-conforming work. They are all required and those by right to get a permit. Obviously, with any permit, the owner can cancel that at any time, notify the development services office, no longer operating, cancel my permit. Again, there is an annual expiration and then an annual renewal process. Standard violation or complaint compliance process, if we do have no of a violation or are given a complaint, we investigate that, validate if there is a compliance issue, and then go through. Our typical process is a first notice with code enforcement, notifying the owner that there's an issue, talk through what that compliance would look like. If that continues, they'll receive a final notice, given the time period based on whatever that violation is. If there's still not compliance, then they will receive a citation. Those citations then go to municipal court for assessing the fine and so on. But that's our standard process, so it is, whether it's something that's proactive or reactive, something that staff sees or a complaint from the public, investigate it to make sure there is a valid complaint or a valid non-compliance issue, and then that would move forward. So that's, like I said, that's kind of the general rollout that staff would go through, regardless of what the parameters of the permit is. If we put a permit in place, that's what we'll go through. With the workshop, we had a lot of discussion on what the permit itself has. I'd be happy to go through sections of the ordinance or take questions, comments.
Council, Brenda, anything? The moment?
No.
Joe?
I'll have someone after we've heard from some of the speakers.
Kim?
Well, I have several pages of comments. And I also have some items specifically within the ordinance, but I don't necessarily know how far we're planning to go down that road. So I look to you, Mayor, to tell me what...
Shall we listen to the public and then go through that? Roman, anything right now?
No, I have a series of things to look at in the ordinance too. So I can wait until the public, that way if they have anything, we can take a look at it at the same time. That works.
All right, Shelley.
Super fast because I know you're tired of hearing from me this evening. I just want to thank you for hearing the voices of all of us because I hear all of us in your discussions. Our Texas Neighborhood Coalition has reviewed in detail this particular ordinance. And I can tell you that there's a lot that we have an agreement with everyone who's spoken earlier in the workshop. I do believe that as the suggestion that Ms. Hughes had of getting a group together, I have no doubt that this could be compromised through and that we could come to an agreement. We found that there were many things in the proposal that were not particularly grounded in definitive language would be one way of putting it. It left a lot that was really questioned, where we had a lot of questions. And we want to prevent confusion and disagreement and think some more work on the permit things could do that. So just want to say thank you for that and want to let you know how much we appreciate. Planning and zoning has been phenomenal and we appreciate all that you have done in terms of trying to do a fair deal. And we want to join you in that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Kurth. Kim Richards.
Just two quick things. I'm a bit confused on the grandfathered in and not conforming. I mean, if we're grandfathered in, doesn't that basically define that we're already in compliance because we're grandfathered in? So I'm a bit, I don't, I'm not understanding why there's two different things. But also, I'm really concerned about the portion in there about not allowing us to renovate anything on our properties. I've got a home that's under 900 square feet. It's got a Jack and Jill bathroom that's shared, and I really need to add another bathroom. And basically, what you're going to say is, "I can never do that, even though it would fall under all the normal codes that we have to follow for building any addition in town." Why would we be told we can't do that if every other homeowner in town has the right to do it?
Thank you.
Robin Perrin.
Ditto, I have another R1 property. Because of the vote that you just did, you made me non-conforming now. And I want to add a bathroom, I want to add a master bedroom. So we're already, you already made that property, one of the properties that I'm thinking of, worth about $150,000 less. And so to me, it's picking winners and losers. It's just, there's so many things when it comes down, when you start reading this, that just pop out as, "That's not even feasible." And so I'm just going to just go as fast as I can. No on-street parking, city streets are for public use. One place reads each permit will need to renew by December 31st. Then another place reads 30 days before December 31st. So we need to make sure that it's one or the other, or both, or whatever. The director may immediately revoke a permit or renewal. Again, this happens, that needs to happen after the appeal process is gone through completely. You can't give someone, one person, an immediate revocation thing unless there's something crazy and then you need to bring in the police or the fire for that. The director cannot ever have sole discretion, and those are the words that are in this, sole discretion, can't. You just can't give one person sole discretion because that's overriding your rights too. We should be able to operate until the whole process of appealing is done. So let's say I'm in violation of something. You should have a gradable, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm thinking, a scale. And then you can't just say from the beginning, "Okay, well, until this violation is done, you can't do this property." And not only does it say we can't do my property, but I can't do any other properties that I have. I can't run them, I can't accept guests, I can't. So all of that language has to be gone. That would put all of us out of business. The, I ask you personally for a citywide ordinance, if you have a parking problem, if you have a noise problem, if you have a whatever, do a citywide ordinance, it cleans up our city. I just don't understand. To me, that is just common sense. I cannot understand why that isn't happening. If it's citywide, then we're not singled out. We're singled out in a lot of these things. Property values are chosen now just because of your vote that you just did. Property values are changed completely now. So anything that I have already bought, that I've had in my family for 70 years, my brother's property, is, you've just changed a lot. And I know that you're, I know you're trying your best. It is frustrating for us, though, because you're picking winners and losers. Non-conforming is such a huge thing. I thank Councilmember Clarkson for this because there's so much. I have a three-acre piece of property that I would like to have some things on there and this non-conforming issue is going to keep coming up. I mean, not I, but it's a family property, my brother and I own it. Mayor Eisner just read, "Lost rights may never be regained." This is, never rings true to us. This is, I know so many people in here that this doesn't actually affect their livelihoods, and it really does ours, and I need you to see that. Please do not dox our address. One of your provisions says that you're going to give the address out to everybody. I can't say enough. That's so dangerous. And my husband's coworker just had someone back up a truck to his STR and load all the furniture in and go because his property was online with the city that he was in. I don't know if that's my thing, but I ask that the renewal process be automated.
That's your dingaling.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Karen, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question of her while she's here about one of the... I'm trying to find something that she said about any ordinance.
Okay.
You mentioned the 30-day expiration and that there was a provision that said 30, you have to renew 30 days before or you have to renew on December...
It said had to be started 30 days before December 31st, but then it said the deadline was December 31st. And I ask you that we automatically renewal, have an automatic renewal unless you stop it. Because then we won't come up and say, "Oh, you're four days late. You've got to go through this whole process again."
Okay, so the deadline to renew was December 31st, is what you're saying?
Yes, but then another place that said the deadline to renew is 30 days before December 31st.
Right, you have to renew 30. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
My name is Sharon Mason. I live here in Kerrville. I'm a member of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition and on behalf of the Kerrville Chapter... And on behalf of the Kerrville chapter, and especially after this, all of this discussion and the back and forth and the questions and everything, I just want to thank the council for your thoughtful consideration of both ordinances on the agenda. If you approve, if, if you approve, if approved, it will mean a great deal to the residents of Kerrville and will go a long way to meeting the goals and ideals of the 2050 Plan that focus on strengthening and maintaining the quality and value of our neighborhoods without displacing people. So we are asking you to please approve both of these ordinances. And also, we would just like to thank, again, the council, all the city staffers, all the people who put in all the hours and all the work doing research and analyzation, and analyzing and developing solutions. It's obviously been a lot of work. And we just want to say thank you. And please pass both.
Thank you.
The last speaker, Larry Howard.
Well, I try this time, this time. Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane. I had several questions about not, this, the zoning, this is like the actual ordinance for the short-term rentals. And in one slide that Drew had up, it talked about fire and ingress and parking. And it said, here's to building codes. And is there going to be an inspection process in this, that they'll come out and do a building inspection?
That's.
That it's got to be the current codes?
It says life safety inspection.
Proposed, Larry.
Not necessarily current code.
Building codes.
Doesn't it say life safety inspection? I, I had questions about what that meant as well.
Okay, so it's, what I'm asking is that when they come out, is the building inspection inspector going to come out to look at the house? Look at the water heater?
We can clarify all the questions after the end of the public hearing component. We can get all the questions and then staff can answer everything all one time.
Just make it, make it a question to us.
Make it a question. Will it require an inspecting from a building official from the building department of the city of Kerrville? Second is, everybody's used the 2050 Plan. It's either a sword in the front of you, it's in your back pocket. It says a lot of things that everybody can pick and choose from. The one thing it does mention is short-term rentals and the benefit that they would be for the city of Kerrville. You can look that up too. The last thing is the non-conforming issue, that once you pass the last ordinance that you did, and again in two weeks, the conditional use permits that are out there now, will have to go through a process. And if they do have to have the inspection, that's going to be an issue as well. I'd like to know about that. That's all I had to say about this. I think you're looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. So if we had, you know, the fire department out every week and the police department out and building services and code review and everybody else. This did not start from a public safety standpoint. This started from a conditional use permit that was built in there for hotel tax only. And when the first one got to planning and zoning and somebody started saying, not in my neighborhood, and they got a forum and they got a voice, there's 30 or 40 people that have spoke at all these meetings and town forums, and they're the ones that are driving this thing we're looking at tonight. There's 23,500 people that live in this town that vote and pay taxes every single day. I'm their neighbor and you're their neighbor. And I don't appreciate this ordinance and I'm not in favor of it at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before, is there anyone else who feels they need to?
It's not a public hearing.
It's, it's not, but I've just, if there was anybody else. Yes, sir?
Just like to add two things very quickly. My name is John Perrin, 940 Jefferson. First, in this, in this ordinance, it talks about quiet hours. There are no quiet hours in the city of Kerrville. Why should that only be directed at us? It needs to be a citywide thing. And secondly, no, this states no weddings or receptions or anything like that at STRs. This is a freedom, freedom of assembly issue. According to the Third Court of Appeals from the state of Texas in 2019, I request that you take a look at that very clearly so that you do not overstep bounds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, here we are, again.
Getting Larry's questions done, or?
Well, let's, go ahead, Drew.
So through the.
You have something, that's all right.
Yeah, through the joint workshops, the town hall, we were looking at inspections comparable to other similar type situations. Boarding home is one example. We do look, fire marshal, building official and code enforcement do onsite inspections for those based on each, each of their properties. And again, it's that life safety, major infractions. Not that we're going to make sure the building is up to current building code or current fire code, but if there are any major life safety hazards, those will be addressed. The non-conforming, again, that doesn't restrict anyone from updating the home. It doesn't restrict them from increasing the footprint. So if it's, if it's a remodel or a, if there's any issues that they need to update, those are of course allowed, but it is just the expansion. Two sections that reference the 250-foot separation. Section 176.4 talks about the 250-foot separation that we took out of the zoning. And 30-180A1 also references that 250-foot.
Say the, the 200, or sorry.
180.
176?
Yeah, 176.
Section 4.
Section 4. 180A1.
1, yeah. Yep.
Yes. And just a clarification, if there was an applicant, or a permit that was suspended, that does not suspend all permits for that operator. That would permit the oper, prohibit the operator from obtaining a new permit until that suspension is reconciled. So if you have a violation on one property, that doesn't stop all of your properties. Just for clarification on that one. I think that was all the ones I had.
All right, counsel. I'm just, I'm going to speak and say, I'm just uncomfortable with all of this. I'm, I'm not ready to, to make any yeses or nos or even really look at, at corrections right now. There's, there's a lot involved here. So I'm just, I will say that first and then Brenda, tell me what, tell us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to vote on this tonight. I think that it would benefit everybody in the room to design some ordinances that work and that are fair to everybody in the room.
And, and I will add, I say that, and staff, you don't take anything personal. This, this is not, you guys have spent hours on this. I know that. But I just, just personally, thank you. Joe?
Yes, the staff did what we asked. They, they, they took a swing and we appreciate it. You know, a lot of the points made tonight by operators of STRs are valid. And they understand their business better than I do. They understand how the business works. And I think this ordinance would benefit from input from them. Direct input. And I don't know how we facilitate that, but some of the points that they've made, I think are valid. I do think we should have a permitting process. Not, not because of neighborhoods, not because of the other ordinance, but because of the safety of our guests. I do believe we should have some penalties if someone doesn't live up to what they're supposed to do. But it, it really would benefit, in my opinion, this ordinance would benefit from input from those people who actually have, have run these businesses, have invested in these businesses. And I agree with you all, if we were to table it until some more input could be had from, especially the people who are running those businesses, I think, I think it'd be a stronger and, and more easily complied with ordinance.
Kim?
I agree.
Roman?
I had a series of things that we could have gone through in the ordinance. We may not do that, if that's council's desire not to go through it. What I will say is from the beginning, I think, I'm the first one to say that when I got on council last year, this is something that I requested that we looked at. And I concur with several people who say that we're trying to address problems that are not problems, trying to address concerns that aren't real problems yet. To those who have the concerns, I respect your concerns and the input that you provided. But unfortunately, you got to help us help you. We don't have the reports to show that anything has been filed, any complaints with our police department, with the city, nothing. So it's very hard from my standpoint to put into place an ordinance with no evidence to show what we're trying to correct. We just adopted or approved a resolution for a short-term rental. What, the purpose that I tried to get across is we use the same conditions, pretty much the same conditions for every conditional use permit. And my point was, if we're going to do that, why do we have the conditional use permit process in the first place? Let's just codify all of these conditions that are in the resolution and allow it by right. And we, again, we've told you what to do and you've come back to us. But from my standpoint, this goes way farther than what my intention of, let's just get this codified and now you're allowed to do it by right. You no longer have to come to P and Z and city council and use that, use your time to come and do that process and staff's time, because you're going to get granted anyways. We've been doing that universally for everybody if they have the same conditions. So that's where I stand with it. I think we got a lot in the ordinance that may not be, need to be there. I don't, I don't know what we, what we want to do. We've received a lot of input from both ways. I don't know what else we're trying to, what else we would try to get from them. Instead, what I might suggest is, let's take tonight to kind of look through this ordinance, since we have a couple of weeks to do it. And if there's anything that is in here that addresses something that doesn't need to be addressed, we go ahead and tell staff and try to get a recommendation for an ordinance next time. I'll give a couple of things. Noise and nuisance ordinance, I believe should be citywide.
Can I, can I just clarify something?
Sure.
And it's just, I, I also have a list of things, but I would prefer that I know whether or not we're going to, you know, move ahead or not. Because I don't want to go through things if we're not going to, you know, I guess, some more direction. So sorry, you know, but, but I'm like you, I can, I have a lot of things that I can go through too. And I just don't want to be spinning our wheels unnecessarily if, if we're going to move in a different direction.
Would it be appropriate for Councilmember Clarkson and Councilmember Garcia to provide any input to staff directly? Or does it need to come from all of us?
Well, I, I, I already talked, yeah, I mean, I already talked to staff about, about a lot of issues. And a lot, and the ones that I would say that were, that were not policy issues or more clerical or just, or things to just clarify, as well brought forward in the draft that came, came on Friday. But then the other pieces that were policy pieces, I guess, it sounds like we've got two things happening. I, I, I hear Councilmember Hughes saying, you know, I'm sorry, and, and Councilmember Herron saying, let's get some input, more input from, from these, from these owner, operators that would be living with these rules. And then I hear the Councilmember Garcia saying, we've already got all the input we need, so let's direct scan. So, so that's, I just want to be clear on, on what we're doing. Before we go through that whole process.
I would say, I did exactly, probably something similar to what you did. I went and met with staff on a lot of the clerical things and I told them a lot of the policies that are in the ordinance, I'm going to hold off and take to council.
Right.
Because that's stuff that we decide. And so I would like for us, if we can, to discuss any of those policy-driven provisions in the ordinance. That way, the recommendation comes from either a majority of all of council to staff to give us an ordinance, maybe a second reading, or if we need to hold off, bring us a whole different ordinance. But I think polit, this policy pieces could, should be discussed between council, like. So we're hearing, so I mean, we can't do that individually, so we're, we're here to do that, have that conversation.
I would just suggest that there are some things in there that may be policy pieces that would benefit from the input of the short-term operators. I mean, there are things like, how often should we have it for, how often should we have permitting? I mean, one year, two year, three years. Inspection piece, I, I, I just feel like what Councilmember Herron said was that the people living with this and understanding this may be the best source for those.
So if we were going to do that, what is the, what is the best way for us to go about doing that? That, I think that's, that's my biggest question is, just how do we, how do we come up with some people to give input here? And suggestions?
I mean, we could table it pending an appointment of a committee of operators and neighborhood, people with neighborhood concerns, but I don't know how we'd appoint that committee. I mean, each of us could appoint one, I guess, or nominate one.
Yeah, we've certainly done that before with other ad hoc committees. We've got a structure for that. We've usually allowed a number of appointees from each council member. And then you all can choose it amongst whatever membership that you desire to have input on that committee. And so if that's the desire, we certainly could bring a resolution forth at a future council meeting. If y'all are looking to table this and go that direction.
And this is not a criticism of what you've done. You had to start, you had to have some paper, ink on the paper. And I think you've done a good job. You, you have given people plenty to talk about. But I think, I think it would benefit.
I think, I think it would too. Well, what if, what if, what if we each proposed a STR owner and a neighborhood person? And if they want to, you know, with their input, that we, if we needed that, we could get that. So if we each did that, what's our timeframe here?
We can bring an acting resolution with a, some degree of scope to you guys at your next council meeting. And then you all can make appointments if you're ready to do that and clarify any scope elements to it and move forward.
All right, what do you guys think? That work? Roman? Brenda?
I just don't know that two per, two people per council person is enough. I'm, I'm wondering.
Ten.
Yeah, we'd probably do three, that way we have an odd number.
Three?
Odd numbers.
Yeah. But again, we've got a model for that. We'll bring that to you guys. We've done that with other committees before, so y'all don't have to do that tonight. If y'all want to change it next time, you can, but we'll be prepared to bring you a model ad hoc committee.
I'm appreciative of your, of your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a motion to table? Do we?
I would say though, on the, on the appointment part of it, I would, I'm in favor of us each appoint, like the mayor suggested, each appoint one STR operator or owner and one neighbor. I think, or one resident that doesn't do it. I think.
Just leave it.
I mean, what are we going to, two, am I going to do two residences and one STR operator? Or two STR operators and one residence? I don't, I just don't like the optics of how it looks of councils having to, an individual councilor is having to pick two or one, right?
Right, and I get that. I just, I just want to be sure that whatever committee is formed, that they, they get sufficient enough representation so that the information that comes to the meetings is accurate and is a representation of everybody.
I agree with that.
I think that this is a starting place. I don't think this, I don't think we tossed this.
This is what they're going to work with.
This is the document to.
Give that to them and, yeah. But in terms of how many appointees we get and how we do that, that's, I just have a concern.
Okay, we can, you guys can kind of work that out. We'll do that in two weeks.
If you don't like it, you guys can tear it up and we can do something different.
Start over, okay. All right, and I guess. All right, and, uh, I guess we need a motion to basically table and direct staff to bring us some information to go.
We'll bring you a resolution with a, uh, ad hoc committee at the next council meeting if you're ready for that.
So move.
Well, well.
Anybody good?
Well, let me ask Mike because the, I'm trying to think of the timeline of this and how we have to, you know, do notices and first reading, second reading. Are we allowed to table something? And I, we, we don't know how, uh, we don't know how long the committee's gonna be operating. Um, one meeting, two meetings? And so is it okay for us to table like an ordinance on this on first reading? Or do we have to completely scrap it and come back and do the notices for first reading and everything?
There was no notices with this one. This was not a public hearing, so.
Right, right.
You know, you could, you just wanna make it clear. The motion's gotta be clear so you all know some kind of the next step and where you're going.
Mm-hmm, basically, we'll, we'll table and staff will bring back to us a plan.
Okay.
All right? All right, someone wanna make that motion?
She, uh, Kim made the most, she's so.
Did you make a motion?
I seconded.
Uh, you seconded.
That's quick.
That was, all right, everybody in favor, council members, raise your right hand.
Do you need the clarification on the motion? Motion is to table ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash thirty and direct staff to bring forward a plan to appoint an ad hoc committee.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, good? Second fit?
Second, yes.
All right, now, everyone in favor, raise your right hand. And it is approved, all right, thank you. Uh, let's take a, of, an eight-minute break here. And, um, everyone in the room, thank you all, and, uh, there will be more.
Why not Dan?
Yeah, and really, really.
At eight twenty, we will reconvene in our meeting. We're ready for eight A. Shelley, will you read us in, please?
Yes, ma'am, ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, second reading. An ordinance creating a planned development district zoning for light commercial uses and a standalone parking lot on an approximately one point four-nine acre property consisting of lot twenty-one R block G B F K addition within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as eight twenty Sidney Baker and eight twenty-nine Clay Street. Adopting a concept plan and conditions related to the development and use of said lot and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have three citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is second reading and I normally wouldn't have a presentation on second reading, but we did have some dialogue, uh, and some feedback from council, um, after the postponed second reading last time. Uh, so the ordinance in your backup is what came out of Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, with their recommendation. Based on that feedback that we received, uh, are recommending a couple of changes. That the allow, to allow the access to vehicles from Clay Street. Um, therefore screening and gates on the front of Clay Street would not be required. And then require, required the screening on the southwest and northeast property lines, the side property lines of the Clay Street portion of the property. Um, and I'll go through our normal slides here. Um, here is the zoning of the property. You can see this block is zone RT, uh, with C two behind it for the majority of the block along Sidney Baker. Um, here's an aerial photo. No council had asked last time about the other properties, um, that are non-residential. Um, so you can see those highlighted there. Uh, you have the apartment complex, uh, the building that was a church, I'm not sure what that use is now, directly across the street from eight twenty Sidney Baker, or eight twenty Clay, excuse me, eight twenty-nine Clay. Uh, the adjacent existing parking lot that's non-conforming. Uh, of course, the back half of Zion Lutheran Church is on Clay Street. And then across the street, there is a apartment complex there as well. Again, here's the site plan of both property, both portions of the property, portion A and portion B as a reference to the ordinance. And then this portion here showing just the, zoomed into the parking lot. Now, if council does wish to adopt those amendments, just please include that in your motion of those amendments to the ordinance.
Would you repeat those amendments for us, Drew?
So that does allow access to vehicles or of vehicles from Clay Street. Um, screening and, or, and or gate are not required along Clay Street. And then the screening is required on the southwest and northeast property lines. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public comments.
Hey, council member?
Brenda?
What about the, the dumpsters?
That's, I.
But that one is, let me double check.
The solid waste collection bins.
Yes, I thought it was in the draft.
In dumpsters.
Yeah, section K, it is included in the draft in your backup.
Oh, okay, so these are the only two.
Does not require an amendment.
That's right, okay, okay.
It's included in the draft in our backup?
That's correct. Uh, section K.
Is that something that we have here or is that?
Yes.
Section K.
Page four, section K.
Okay, yeah, that's already there. Did you find it?
I did.
Got it.
Are we referring to the draft that was, the revision, the revised draft?
I'm referring to the draft that is in the, the backup, in the packet.
Okay, so anything in the revised document that we were given is not going to be.
He, he's, he's addressed everything i- in that revised draft, just so that you're aware and the public's aware of what's changed.
Gotcha. So that, that is the allowing access to Clay Street.
Yeah.
Therefore not requiring screening or a gate along Clay Street. And clarifying that the screening is required, the southwest and northeast property lines. The, the summary of those edits that you've seen.
So you okay, Roman?
Um, I, I think so. So we're going off to the revised draft, right? That's just what I'm trying to figure out. Cause I don't have that printed out in front of me. I have it on.
Oh, I'm looking the wrong thing then.
That's right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm looking the wrong thing.
Okay.
He's.
Drew's working from the draft.
Okay, so it's the one, the two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, everybody good?
I think I know.
I'm good, I, I'm on the same page now.
Okay.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Drew.
All right, uh, Shelley, who, uh, is our first speaker? Julie Reeves?
Hello. I've been confused, ma'am. I'm Julie Reeves and, um, we live on Clay Street up on the corner. I just wanna start by saying thank you for all the work you've tried to do all these years with this issue to protect the neighborhood and the residents of Clay Street from commercial encroachment. Uh, you know, my first thought about this whole thing is what was wrong with the fence across Clay Street? I don't, I would like to know, and I would, I would just love it if somebody would say, why does he need access to Clay Street? Which is going to be a damage to the neighborhood. It's increased traffic, we've talked about it, the council didn't wanna do it. We all said, great, let's don't have any access to Clay Street. I don't understand, if he wants a parking lot, just to be frank, what the heck? What's wrong, what's wrong with having Clay Street fenced off? It's, if a trash truck can pull in there and empty the trash and go around that building and come back out on Sidney Baker, and he's been doing it for years, it's not a new shopping center. And he said he wanted it for employees, why is it not okay? Why does he need access to Clay Street? A lot of us have began to say, what does he really want to be doing here? If he wanted a parking lot, he got it approved by the judge, he gets his parking lot. We said, okay, we're gonna fence it, so nobody has to look at it. We're not gonna have cars coming in and out of Clay Street, so it's a safety issue. We don't have to worry about that, we just have to, okay, he's got his parking lot. Now he wants to go out to Clay Street. Does he want a trash truck coming in there to a dumpster? Does he want deliveries backing up, a truck backing up to take deliveries? A Cisco truck? They've been doing it with no Clay Street lot for these years. So why is the plan not okay? I feel like there's something not being discussed and it's very uncomfortable for all of us who live on that street. So, uh, I appreciate everything you've tried to do, but I just urge you to continue to do what you can to protect Clay Street from this commercial encroachment. It's gonna affect other neighborhoods who are in the same situation. They back up to Sidney Baker or Junction Highway and next thing you know, you've got these businessmen with just wanting to make a buck. They don't care about the neighborhood behind them. If he wanted a parking lot, it should have been okay the way it is. He has shown his hand. So what does he really want it for? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I defer until after the next speaker? I've just gotten some information I'd like to read first.
George Broody?
Well, hey, well, all right, so this is George, George, uh, George, George Broody. That's why I answered my phone, just so you know. I always say George, this is George, George Broody, how am I help you? Anyways, so, uh, that's an aside, that's all right. So sixteen sixteen Glen Road, whatever. Um, so the reason I needed, wanted to hear from is, there's a couple of things that have been going on in this thing, the agenda bill. I might be misunderstanding it, but the way I understand how we got here is mistakes were made by the city that allowed a plat to be gotten through. And so therefore the lots, the two lots are now one. So in the agenda bill, it describes this as, um, a C two and an RT. But as I understand our zoning code as it was, by being one lot, it's now actually carrying the zone of the bigger piece, which means this entire thing should be C two. And, uh, the other thing is it describes it as under existing uses in the agenda bill as a commercial and vacant tract. There's only one tract, so it's actually got commercial on it. So that's the current state of it. Um, the reason I wanted to hear from him is cause I'm, I was going with the understanding that because you had an earlier executive session meeting about this, that you still hadn't gotten buyoff on the, uh, the plan from the, um, the property owner, who was not the applicant. And, um, so the question still remained, what would happen if you apply this P D to a property that isn't wanting it to be done? I'm not even sure why that's allowed. The city applying for a P D seems kind of crazy because the city creates the zoning code. So, you know, it, it just seems a little bit strange. Um, but anyways, going, uh, and the last thing is a standalone parking lot. The definition of standalone parking lot in the agenda bill leaves off a sentence from your zoning code, which says specifically not included are parking lots located on the same premises as the principal use they serve. Therefore, the parking that we're talking about here is not a standalone parking lot. It is on one lot, same premises as the building that it's gonna serve. So, uh, an, another problem sort of with the language in there. But, um, it seems to me that your better bet would have been to have a negotiation with the property owner. Let the thing be C two because that's what it is. And I don't think if you call it P D, they can stay a C two non-conforming. They can still pave a parking lot. So to answer Ms. Reeves' question, I would imagine the reason you're getting the opening in there is, is to throw a bone to them because you knew that they, they were gonna get that access to Clay Street no matter what. The city's already dropped the ball there. So to me, the best thing to do would be clean up this, eliminate the P D, just skip the P D. Try and get an arrangement with them, because the P D on its face probably shouldn't be in front of you. We talked about that before, the, you know, the language in the code, we're violating the code just to even consider it. Um, so instead of making a bad situation worse, just put it where it is, accept our loss and try and get the screening like you're trying to get now. Um, seems like the most appropriate and expeditious thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Cahoon?
Thank you, Patrick Cahoon, one seven-nine South Main Bridge, Texas. Uh, Mayor and council members, uh, appreciate you had a difficult evening already, so endeavor to be short. It's, it's the nature of the job, but, uh, uh, certainly appreciate the, the challenges that you guys face. I know how difficult it is to, uh, operate under these circumstances with, with no pay and lots of, uh, criticism. So I understand how that works. Uh, but being said, uh, there's a lot of information here going on with this. We've been here for five years now and I literally now have another version of this to look at. Uh, at the end of the day, a negotiation was made following a lawsuit that basically led us to what I thought was the result, we're gonna get the parking lot that the judge ordered. The city felt like it needed to go through a process to get through its own rules. We accommodated that, we spent a year, literally a year negotiating. So we've been in compliance and, and do whatever the city was that it wanted to do and still be able to give, uh, R B M, Mr. and Mrs. Motherall, the use of the property that is an attractive, useful contribution to the existing commercial property. And so that's what we're asking you to do. I can't tell in the five minutes I've had in front of me these precise wording on this version of the document if it's accurate or not. I can hand you the original document that we all agreed to, that never made it to your front doorstep. And I encourage you to look at that. And that one has been properly and thoroughly vetted. And while it's not ideal for my client, it certainly does the job. And I think it dot, covers all the I's and dots all the T, or dot, dots all the I's and crosses all the Ts from the city's perspective, because your, your council has signed off on it both inside and outside. And so I'd respectfully request that you decline the one in front of you and accept the original version because I don't know what's in this version. All that was available online in the handout in the agenda packet was the, the version that P N Z had. And just in the five minutes I'm sitting here, what I got from Drew doesn't coincide with what I'm seeing on the paper. So I'm concerned about pushing this through and not getting it done in an accurate and complete manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Not a public hearing.
We'll give you two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. I'm Mary Lee Job Stewart and I was four, five years, I don't talk right because of a horrible stroke and I apologize for my talking right. Uh, I was five years old when we moved into the area, the house that I'm still in, uh, in nineteen forty-one. So I would really appreciate them treating it right. And I'm just not talking worth a damn. Oh, Mr. Mo, I can't say the man's name. Oh, bought this place roughly, I'm gonna say six years ago, maybe five, fif- seven years ago. And he moved the house out and to another place and it was a concrete house. And he's been trying to use it ever since then as an empty house. He's been trying to make us into business. And it's been a commercial, it hasn't been a commercial area here. And that's all I have to say. I'm sorry, I can't talk.
Thank you.
Just fine, thank you.
All right, Drew? Anything you want to add?
Uh, just a couple of clarifications. Um, the plat was originally denied by staff based on the old zoning code. And the way that boundary description was written would inherently have changed the zoning, which does not follow due process. That is no longer in the code, so the judge ordered that the plat be approved. The zo, the property is no longer, or does not automatically become C two because it was replanted, again violates due process. So the property is C two and RT with a split zoning on one lot. Some of the references in the, um, backup are just to make clear which portion of the property that we're referring to. The vacant portion on Clay Street versus the developed portion on Sidney Baker. Um, with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions, comments.
All right. Roman, we'll start with you, anything for Drew?
Regarding the plat, it was approved, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's any dispute on what the court already said. The plat was approved by operation of law because we improperly, in their words, improperly denied the plat.
Yes, the plat should have gone to the planning commission for denial.
Okay, so that didn't happen. So it was approved by operation of law thirty days after whenever it was submitted. I don't know what, when that was, but, so it's, it's one. And then we changed our zoning code after that?
That's correct.
So then why are we not using the zoning codes that were in effect when the plat was submitted to us?
Because the zoning was rewritten for the community, those zoning districts no longer exist. The council adopted a zoning map with C two and RT. The council adopted a zoning map with C two and RT.
So this kind of goes back to something that I asked about short-term rentals that applies in the same concept, which was if we have a short-term rental, CUP request that comes to us and we decide to table it, because that was what a lot of people were telling us to do or asking us to do. And we change the ordinance later on, don't we still have to consider the CUP for that short-term rental under the ordinance that was before us at the time it was submitted and we were told yes? So my confusion is can, can we not use, I mean, why aren't we using the old, the old zoning code? Is that not the same concept if it, that was?
That zoning code was repealed by council.
But at the time of the plat?
That's not what we're talking about today. That zoning code was repealed by council and replaced with the current zoning code with the current zoning of the property, C two and RT.
Okay.
Regardless of the property lines and the plat description.
So that's, that's regardless of what the court order said, because everything that the court, the court case was talking about was how everything was at that time. I mean, we, we've changed a lot of things since then. I'm very well aware of that. But at that time, that's what the court was taking into consideration, everything at that time.
Yeah, but, but not to just, go ahead.
I was going to say subsequent changes don't seem to be relevant and fall within how we now allow the parking lot.
When you, when you're talking about zoning, though.
Right.
Thinking about, we had to update all of our zoning map. So something that existed before was changed into something, there's nothing left in our city that has a zoning district based on the old zone code. Everything had to be updated to the standard that it is today. So I, I, I don't, am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
But I think it's just the application of it, because no, I, I got what, we're on the same page at that point. Different in that way.
The judge's ruling was limited to, really limited to staff's interpretation of a provision on how you use two separate properties with a zoning district line down the middle of them. And he, he ruled that we were applying it incorrectly, and so he said two things, right? He ordered two things. Approve the plat because you didn't have authority to deny the plat in the way you did. Plat was approved, and then he said allow the parking lot use on the Clay Street property tract. And that's what, that's what we're doing.
Issue the relevant permits to, you know, get that done.
Yes.
Okay. To me, it's just, I respectfully don't agree with that analysis and how we're going about it for several reasons. Last thing I'm going to comment on, because this is probably going to be the last reading we're, we're doing on this. Again, same comments on, on standalone parking lot. Definition in our zoning code does not, or in our code of ordinances does not say that this is a standalone parking lot, or it shouldn't be. It'd be an accessory parking lot. On the draft that we were sent by staff, that was removed, so I wasn't sure if that was intentional. And if that, was that, are we just calling it a parking lot now, or?
We could strike it and call it a parking lot.
Okay, if that's the case, I don't mean to do this against you, but there is no definition for just a parking lot in the zoning code. We have to kind of pick one or the other.
Dictionary definition is sufficient.
What's that?
The dictionary definition of a parking lot would be sufficient.
It's defined in the ordinance. It's before you.
It's defined in the PD.
Okay. So, well, again, okay, so that's another thing. Now we're standalone parking lot, and then we're going back to whether it's the parking lot. And there's a lot, there's a lot in this that we just, I feel like we keep trying to bandage up and we're trying to, I know we're all trying to get.
That's what we're trying to do.
I know, I know, I know we're trying to get to this, but, well, another thing, do we have an original version? Is, or is what we have in our packet the original version? That?
No, the, we, we do, yes, we have an original version. And then we also have the revert, the, the version that's come out of PNZ. And I'll go back to
Right.
Something I preached since the beginning of this. This is an awkward process. We have basically two orders from the judge. I believe we've complied with those orders. Didn't say dispense with any sort of PNZ review or a council review. Hence, you have the ordinance before you.
Gotcha. Okay, last thing, um, counsel. I agree with that. And respectfully, I'll also add, it did not tell us to dispense with any other provision of our code. And we are dispensing with the minimum required tract of five acres. This has been original?
I believe so. It's for Mr. Cahoon.
Sorry, is this the?
It is Mr. Curtis.
This is the original? Okay, thank you. I'll review this when, I guess we have, if we have any other comments while we're doing that. But we're, we're now going, there's a minimum required tract of five acres. If we want to apply a PD district to it, there's a request that comes to council for a waiver from that five acres. This is about, what is it, two point five or one point five? I have the plat, one point, about one point five. And so, I mean, it's very, very straightforward in the process. This isn't, and just to be clear, this isn't a waiver. There's no provision in the ordinance that says we are granting the waiver in advance of this ordinance. So just this, this whole process, I mean, my whole standpoint is this, just to end off with. I'm trying to do everything I can to minimize any further litigation we have to do. I feel like every other councilor is trying to do that. I just have a different perspective and way of doing that. I'm trying to save us money, taxpayer money from not having to do that. We've been doing this for four or five years now already. Zoning code says what it says. There's an argument that well, we would probably still be in the same situation even if we granted the waiver. Well, then what, what's the point of our zoning code if we don't even follow it ourselves? I mean, it's, it's there. It's black and white. I would go ahead and allow further comment, but a motion to deny this and fair and a different process to, to do that. If it needs to be, come back with the original PD, if that's what council agrees with, then that's what we can do, but there's my comments and my action. Thank you.
Are you actually making a motion, Roman?
Yes.
Yes, subject to further discussion. I may withdraw it if there's anything else we can do.
Is there a second to his motion? Okay, it lacks for a second.
And let me be clear, as per our process, you all received the, the draft that the two parties had gotten together and, and reviewed and agreed to. Then you, then you received a report from PNZ, right, with changes. And, and that's, that's kind of where we are, or that, you know, it's subject to any changes you all make.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mike, you're, you're, you are our city attorney. I just, I just want to make it very clear that, that I am putting my faith and confidence in what, what you're telling me, and you're telling me that you believe that this is the best course of action for us, that we don't need to go through a further process of a waiver, or that we're just trying to move this process forward as a result of a judgment that was rendered. And you feel like this is a legal process that we can take to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. No, it is, it's an awkward, it's an awkward situation for all of us, so we're trying to make the best of it. Joe, any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Brenda?
All right, are we ready for a motion?
I'm just, I'm still trying to understand what's the significant differences on these originals and what we have.
Okay, so
Does anybody have anything to add to it?
I do need some clarification.
Okay.
Because we were, we, we're, we are going to, if we, if we make a motion, we're moving based on what's in our packet, not what is any other circulating draft. Is that correct? I mean, we have something in our packet, then I'm handed some, it goes back to, to June. But when we move, we're moving on what is in our packet. Because I, there's.
Subject to revisions that I'm, that I'll go through again, that Drew's already gone through with you all.
But that, but we're looking, the document that we're basing this on is, is strictly what's in the packet, nothing, nothing else, just what was in our package, just to be clear.
Okay.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
So, so the only changes that we're proposing based upon comments previously made is we will remove standalone for parking lot, which is defined under, under parking, which is section two E. We have essentially removed the requirement that vehicles are prohibited from entering and exiting onto Clay Street. We have removed, there was language in there about no parking may occur in front of any building, which may be constructed in portion B or within the setback. That's not applicable. They couldn't build a building there, so that's irrelevant language. At the end of E, I'll just, I'll read the last sentence. The parking lot and driveway between portion A and portion B shall be used to provide for vehicular access traveling between the two areas. That seems reasonable, right? That's the language, and shall comply with the city's fire code. That city's fire code was added. And then on the screening, so J, on page four. We essentially, and, and this, this will take me a few seconds to go through. We clarified this. Because what we, the, the big ticket item, if you will, is we removed the.
Apologize for interrupting, Mike, but that was why I was trying to say we ought to work through this. But if you look at H, one A, we're referencing a gate or barrier there as it relates to signs. It's just the document's not clean, is my point.
My caramba.
What, what page was that?
Would you repeat, would you repeat that, please?
Yes, so if you are looking at page three, under signage, H, one A, Roman at I, sign stating do not enter located on the gate or barrier preventing access from Clay Street. If you're alleviating that requirement under E, then you naturally need to remove any sign that says do not enter from the Clay Street entrance. And that's what I'm saying is this, just, it should have a little care put into it.
So, so again, no, no prohibition from entering Clay, no signage of cars stating that, that's a requirement. The screening, the, the big significant issue there is we no longer will require screening across the property line that's adjacent to Clay Street.
Okay, so.
And, and let me, let me just say this. I'm, I'm comfortable. I don't think it'll do much good. I've, I've given them the, the previous ordinance with the changes that we, we talked about last time that I, that I gleaned from executive session. I made, I made some assumptions. I, I pushed that to the, to the property owner, and hang on. And, and. Pardon?
I said, I'm just here in case you need me to say something.
And other than, I think Mr. Cahoon was on vacation, but a few days later I got a response back, and that's all the response I've gotten. That being said, I'm happy for you all to postpone this again. I'm not sure that'll do anything, but if you all want me to bring you back a clean final version, at least the staff's proposing, I'm happy to do that. I'm not sure that Mr., I'm, I'm not putting words in Mr. Cahoon's mouth or, or his client's mouth that says they'll sign off on that. That's what I'm willing to do. Happy to do.
Okay, probably would be good to have it come back in a clean copy with that.
I'm trying to read, I'm trying to read the room a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be the way to go.
The way everybody knows exactly what we did.
Yes. Okay, Drew, anything else for us? Okay, um, do we need a motion to table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is tabled. All right, thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody.
We have a budget.
And we are ready for eight B.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, second reading, and ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Carroll, Texas fiscal year twenty twenty-three, providing appropriations for each city department fund containing the cumulative clause and containing the savings and severability clause. There are two citizen speakers signed up.
Two?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wasn't going to present tonight, but Joe asked me to redo the whole budget. To me, from memory, of course.
I just love this part.
Me too. So here we are at our second reading, so I'm happy to take any questions. I did not prepare a presentation tonight. I think we've seen all of the ins and outs of the budget over the last nine months or so, so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, counsel, any questions for Julie? Nope, good. All right, let us move to our citizens, please.
George Broody.
Still George, George Broody, sixteen sixteen Glen Road.
We can understand you, George. Come on, clear it, please.
So I'm going to read one little part from the, in the budget you're adopting, there's your financial management policy. I'm going to read one little part. It's just expenditures are recognized when the related, uh, fund liability is incurred, if measurable. So I would ask you, how much wear and tear costs will be incurred during the upcoming fiscal year on your streets? And it has been measured. It's an estimate, but it has been measured in the past by a consultant we paid to get that estimate. And it's got nothing to do with what repairs we make. It's the actual wear and tear cost, the expense of that, that is incurred in the next year. And their estimate then was five million dollars. Now, of course, the cost of repairs of things have gone up, so my guess is it's more, but we'll just go with the most recent measured estimate that we have, five million. That's what should be in the street expense line, the paving expense line in your budget, if you're recognizing the expense as it's incurred. We are only reporting, we're recognizing two million dollars, not because that's the expense incurred, but because that's the expense, the amount of money we plan to invest in the repairs. So I would argue that that's a unreported deferred expense. Add to the budget with the def, the debt that we have, we are deferring a lot of expenses. The reason this matters to a citizen is if you would at least recognize it in there, because it is an expense, we then would have a, a better idea of where we're going. And we wouldn't be burdening the future councils and citizens with an oh, gotcha of here's some expense that we didn't really know we had, which we really did, similar to what happened with the public safety complex. And everybody's saying, oh, nobody fixed that. Well, I, I would urge you to consider recognizing it now so that we know what to do with it in the future. We can plan for it. We're not planning for it right now. So that's all.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. I'm back with the street use fee. This year at four percent of the revenue, it'll be five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, which will be transferred to general fund. And I would prefer that we discontinued the street use fee because as we've been told, there's a little wiggle room in the water fund, much more in the general fund. And since we have this year, two million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars more than last year, it looks like it could be done. Oh, I forgot to tell you, first of all, that I really appreciate all the discussion within council members. I know it adds to the length of the meeting, but it's refreshing. On the budget, the sales taxes noted for to date through July to be up twelve point eight percent. And that's being used to fund the five percent COLA for the budget that you're considering now, if I understand that. If you take inflation out, that eight, twelve point eight percent is only four point six percent. And last year, the public safety employees received a raise because of the excess funds from the twenty-one budget. from the 21 budget. And my concern is both of these are based on overages, but now, once they're given, they're part of the base of the salary. So you're adding that to the base of the cost, and will we have, continue to have these increases? And I'm concerned about that because every day we hear stronger reports of recession, slowing of the economy, and today's inflation number was greater than they told us it would be. And I understand Julie's got a Plan B and a Plan C. I'm afraid we might need that this year, and I am cautious on spending. I'm, I'm conservative on my spending in my own life, and that's what I'd like to see with the city. And going back to the appraised values, we were, I had mentioned the frozen funds because there was a statement made about what the city would not receive because of the over 65 frozen funds. The over 65 is one portion of the, the frozen funds that cannot be used for, in the budget. There are two other funds higher than, than the over 65. The only figures I could get with completeness were from 2021, but from 18 to 21, the over 65 was pretty consistent. The capital, the cap on property taxes was $65,200,000. For disabled vets, $39,110,000. And for the over 65, just under $10 million. So though the over 65 does have a consideration, it's far from being the only component of the frozen, or, or of the frozen taxes. So I just would like to say, there are people who think the over 65 are the only ones with the frozen issue, but they're number three in the line of five. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks again for the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, Julie, anything to add?
I can just give a couple quick comments. So just to clarify on the 5% COLA, that is not for fiscal year 23, that was actually the year that we're in right now, and that budget amendment that we did back in February for April. So that sales tax increase or budget amendment was done to cover that 5% COLA in fiscal year 22, so that's not for next year. That's for this year that we're in. So that, it doesn't discount that inflationary factor that we're looking at. So when we're looking at that, you know, 12%, you know, we've been steady at a 9%, which by the way, inflation has been trending down, if you've been watching, and I'll show you some of that in our financial report, we are down at about eight and a half now compared to 9.1, I believe, the end of July, so we're seeing a little bit of change there, and we can see it at the pump, too. So we are pretty conservative. I feel like we did a pretty, brought, brought a pretty conservative budget, knowing that we might have to make adjustments throughout, and I think that's every year. There's no way for us to predict what next June is going to be like, any more than we could last year at this time predict what this June was going to be like. So, you know, we make adjustments, that's part of our job, and, and we do that to make sure that we stay within our budget. So, and, and just one more comment on the freezes, and, and I think I brought this up last time, and I'm happy to bring the presentation back again, but I know I brought it up last time, just to point out that there was never a time when a city staff person said, because you're over 65, you're keeping us from, that was never addressed. So we did bring it out and say, this is our total freeze, and this is what the total freeze impact is, but it was never identified as specifically over 65. So just for clarification on that, so.
Thank you, Julie.
Happy to answer any other questions or...
All right, staff, I keep calling you guys staff. Any comments, any questions, Roman?
The only thing that I'll add is something that I've said for the past couple of years, I wish we had more meetings on the budget before we get into the adoption process. Something that I remember doing at one point, I wasn't even on council then, additional workshops, getting with the public more. There's a, there's, we could, we could add a lot, and I think we've kind of condensed it or reduced it over the years, and I'd like to see us add on to that. Because as everybody knows, the budget's a very extensive document. I go through almost all what we have now, 360, 70 pages of it. There are some amendments that I would propose, but I wish I had all the, you know, all the information together to propose those, those amendments, and there are different sections I'd have to go through to, to do that because of how lengthy the document is. I mean, I can't even do that with an ordinance, for the most part. Can you speak on the... You know what? Never mind, I got that question answered last time.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
I'm not gonna kid you, Roman, more work, more workshops is gonna be a tough sell. Feel like we're workshop to death.
Kim, any questions, comments?
Thank you, staff.
Joe?
You guys have done a good job.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 22-25 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2023 on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Roll call.
Oh, that's, is this, this is...
It's a roll call.
It is, I'm sorry.
That's a bad one.
That's right, that's what we got.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Agner?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right, we are good to go. Yes, Mike? What do you need?
One more.
Oh, the motion to ratify. I'm sorry, I hadn't looked at this sheet, so, okay.
I'll make a motion to ratif, ratifying the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Second.
All right, so we have a second. Shelley?
All in favor.
Oh, this one, okay, this one we don't need the roll call. I'll get with it in the right way. Raise your hands if you are approving. Yes, approved, and thank you.
Got it.
Oh, no, it's only nine, oh, five. Okay, we are ready for 8C. Shelley, if you'll read that in.
Ordinance number 2022-26, second reading, and ordinance levying an ad valorem tax for the use and support of municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas for fiscal year 2023. Apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing other taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Anything you want to?
No real comments here. One thing I probably should have addressed to Mrs. Kay's, Ms. McKay's point, of the 2.39 million, I would point out that 1.7 and some change is for the public safety facility. So the only increase to the general fund is actually $650,000, $660,000 somewhere in, in that point in time. So, and I, I didn't address that while going, I'm sorry. And then also to speak to the, the street use fee, that's a portion of the revenue for the general fund, because the water fund is a business, every other utility company that uses our streets does pay essentially a fee for using those streets, because they're cutting the streets, and so there's a lot of expense that goes into repairing those streets from those utility type uses. And so we can talk about that offline if you'd like to, I mean, I'd be happy to sit in on talk with you through that. So with that, I will give you Mr. Hayes's legal ordinance.
Thank you, Julie.
Legal, uh, language here, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, are we ready for a vote, council? Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve ordinance number 2022-26, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5750, which is effectively a 12.9% increase in the tax value.
Do we have a second?
Second.
From Joe. And roll call, Shelley?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Agner?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much, but you can't leave.
Some can, but not us.
Not you, that's right. Okay, we are ready for 9A, and if you'll read us in, Shelley?
Resolution number 51-2022, a resolution establishing a policy of the city council to set the city's parkland dedication fees for fiscal years 2023 through 2026, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Great. Good evening, mayor and council members. I will try to be brief, running this meeting's running a little bit long. The resolution before you this evening establishes a rate structure for the parkland dedication ordinance fees. As you recall, this was brought before council and adopted at the beginning of January 2022. As a quick reminder, the parkland dedication ordinance is a development tool that requires developers to either dedicate land or pay fees in lieu of, for park acquisition or development. It cannot be used for operations and maintenance, it can only be used for acquisition or park improvements and development. Again, in review, the ordinance was established in 1987. The last revision before 2022 was 1991, setting the fees at $250 per unit, and those are the fees that are still in place today. The ordinance amendment in 20, January 2022, remove the fees from the ordinance and place the fees in the overall fee schedule as adopted by council each year. Incremental fees increases were presented with the ordinance amendment, and staff was directed by the council to bring this back to you via a multi-year fee resolution during the 2023 budget adoption process, which is occurring tonight. The proposed multi-rate fee plan, as we presented to you in January, would be starting in FY23, it would be $700 per unit. In 2024, $800, 1,000 for FY25, and 1,275 for FY26. And this is based on a formula versus median cost per acre, according to CERCAD, resulting in 1,275 per unit. Some comparable cities, parkland dedication, like I explained to you in January, it's very unique and it's different for each city. There's no cookie cutter ordinance, every city's different, some have park development fees, some have development fees, some just have unit fees. So they're all over the, they're all over the board, statewide trend is $200 and up. Bernie by comparison is definitely the highest one in our region, and that calculation, actually, they gave me is a little bit wrong, so that would be closer to comparison of the $800,000 fees for that type of unit versus ours, with our new fee for FY23, would be more around, around the lines of $200,000. Plus, they tack on an additional $300,000 improvement fee. So they're considerably high compared to us, and then the others are about average. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution establishing the fee structure as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, council, we'll start with Brenda this time. Any questions, comments?
No, I'm good.
Joe?
I sure hate to tear up the work of the councils in 1991, because I was on that council.
And we thank you for your work.
No, no, I'm happy to make a motion whenever you're ready.
Okay.
No comments, Roman?
Oh, wow, all right, Joe, make a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 51, 2022, to establish a policy of the parkland dedication fees for fiscal years 2023 through 2026.
Second, we have a second. Everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. All approved. Thank you, Ashley, we appreciate it.
Mayor, before we begin the next one, per discussion with the city manager, I need to recuse myself on items 9B and 9C, as our family owns property that will be directly affected by both.
All right.
And I'll be outside until y'all get done.
And you will not leave.
You can't leave.
You cannot leave. All right, we are ready for 9B. Shelley, read us in, please.
Authorization to submit a funding application to the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for downtown infrastructure and beautification project along Clay Street from Main Street to Water Street, and on Water Street from Clay Street to Sidney Baker. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, Michael?
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for taking the time tonight. I know it's been a, been a long night. I want to also thank Mr. Mike Whitler from K-Pub, who, along with being an excellent partner, is patiently sitting over there waiting his turn. His organization has sent a letter to EIC requesting participation in an underground infrastructure project that K-Pub wants to participate in, and one of the reasons they want to participate in it is because we were awarded a CBPG grant for downtown infrastructure and beautification that everybody knows about. I apologize for my voice, I've got allergies or being new to Kerrville, jacking with me. So what we have is a, up to $450,000 cost that is going to be converting existing overhead lines on Clay Street from about 60 feet short of Main Street down to Clay, and then also placing those utilities underground along Water Street from Sidney Baker to AC Shriner. There's the map right there, you can see, it's just those locations, right? Kind of, kind of along there, it's a rough estimate, that's mine, it's actually on the other side of Water Street there. So K-Pub's request is that the city, or EIC more particularly, pay for half of the cost of that project, and, and they talked through their rationale in their letter, and that, you know, more than half of, half of K-Pub's customers lie outside the city limits, and so their board felt it was appropriate for them to come request half of that funding from EIC. So that is a, a portion of what we want to ask EIC to fund as far as this project goes, because there's also going to be some demolition along Water Street, along the parking garage. We had gotten some quotes on beautification elements along, along the edge of the garage. So that's going to be two raised planters, some new wrought iron fencing, stone veneers over those existing concrete panels on the, on the base floor, removing some old bollard lighting and upgrading some decorative light poles. So what you can see here on your left is the garage as it sits right now, that's the facade that it looks like, and those plants right there. The planters that are right next to City Hall, right behind us all right here, that's what we're proposing to put in two locations along Water Street. I'll show you where here in just a second. The type of plants that we want to put in there, low maintenance, as low maintenance as we could probably get, that's the hope. And the type of wrought iron fence we're looking to put in is this, absent the city of Kerrville logo on there, just kind of a standard wrought iron to go across. As an example of what we want to put in, the tennis courts have this pretty bare bones scenario, looks nice, but is also, you know, pretty low maintenance. All right, and what you can see here, which is probably small on your screens, if you look on your left side, those are the stairs on Clay Street and Water, where you can walk up to the second, third story of the garage. Okay, so you go about three panels in, and that's where those planters are going to be the first set, going along the edge. And then on the other side, you'll see on the right side of that, that's Development Services on the right with those windows there, and a few paces in, that's going to be the planter boxes for, for the other portion. And it's going to have the brick veneer along the other areas, and it's going to have those wrought iron fences. One of the reasons we want to put this project before you is that it's not only going to be a beautification project, it's also going to be a safety component, because what this will do, will drive some of that traffic that goes straight over those bushes in the middle of the parking garage, and, and, you know, not intentionally, but sometimes jaywalks to get across the street.
That would be pedestrian traffic.
Pedestrian traffic, thank you. That's the better way to put it. This would push them towards that, the, those approved crosswalk areas, and that's, that's really what we hope for.
So the only way you'll get to...
You'll have to hop the fence.
You'll have to hop the fence to get across the street to break through, right?
Madam Mayor, if you want to break the rules, you're going to have to hop the fence. So the projected cost for K-Pub's portion is not to exceed $225,000. We have a preliminary estimate on the beautification portion of it at $132,000. We all know that those numbers can fluctuate, and it's really just an estimate at this point, so we wanted to, with your blessing, ask EIC to fund not to exceed $400,000 for the combination of this. And with that, Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to y'all.
All right, questions, council? Brenda?
No.
Just two other quick comments. This does tie in, as we talked about, with the overall downtown CBPG grant and the improvements we're making at Clay Street and Water Street. This also ties in with the approved cuts, Clay Street South program and the conceptual study that was done a number of years ago with a number of different downtown proprietors, as well as just general stakeholders. a number of years ago with a number of different downtown proprietors, as well as just general stakeholders. And then certainly ties in with Kerrville twenty fifty and pedestrian friendliness and improvements that we're looking to make, certainly at the Heritage Center and the library complex.
Is there any plans to do any maintenance or upgrading to the underground drainage system on Earl Garrett?
Not right now, not within this proposed element.
Okay, do you know of anything coming down the pike related to that? The only reason I ask is because with the recent rains that we had, I got several calls from businesses on Earl Garrett that were in ankle-deep water specifically because the drains don't work on Earl Garrett. So I just wanted, since we're talking about downtown.
Right, and we don't have it as part of this, but we certainly, we'd like to look at that more.
Okay, and I did get some pictures, so.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. If you're forward those, we'll look into that. We may just have some clogged drain systems through there.
I'll sure do it, thanks.
My only question is, how did you pick where to do some of this?
Well, I didn't pick it. I think Mike and his team over at K-Pub, I think they wanted to further enhance what EA said, you know, the visions of cuts in downtown and the projects that we already have going on there and working in conjunction with those. But I'll let Mike kind of speak.
So one of the elements with cuts that we help support are the string lights. And the first example of that was at where the, the Dert mural is on the Napa building, between Napa and Pint and Plow. And so there's also an idea to do one of those between the parking garage and the vocal building, and removal of the line will help support that. In addition, it's just a lot of energy in that area, and if, if we were going to try to beautify in that area, to me, this would be the time to do it, you know, and if we don't do it ahead of these projects, it's pretty much going to stay the way it is. To be absolutely clear about it, this is a beautification project, so you're converting facilities that are working fine, you know, that are just overhead to, you know, you're burying them. So, you know, it's not an absolute need. So, but just with everything, this, I mean, it's good. There's also the, the service to the AC Shriner Mansion, right, is, is going to be inadequate when that gets redeveloped, and, and this helps, this, this helps serve that in the future as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate K-Pub being willing to participate in this.
Partners?
So.
So, yeah, so I, I had talked to the city manager earlier because I was confused, and, and I realized in talking to him that it's been several years since we've really had quality of life projects running through EIC, because I said, well, I'm on EIC, and I don't remember talking about this in EIC. And so, I, just because I asked the questions, I just thought I would, you know, mention that, of course, this will go to EIC where it will be, it will be, at that point, these parameters would be more.
Pushed out?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then it comes, if EIC signs off, then, and I said, well, why do we have to do all of that? And, you know, I guess among other reasons, if it's not something that is a council priority, then why would we direct EIC to move forward with it? I was just for me, so I thought I would just share that, because it just kind of made me remember that we haven't really, we, we've done a lot of infrastructure, but not a lot of quality of life stuff.
And we kind of stopped everything downtown there when, with COVID.
When, and this was, this project was on the books and approved by EIC at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when COVID hit, and then it was pulled back, so.
And so there's, and then right there, I didn't get to it, the, the kind of the next steps. And this is going to be the same for the next two items, is asking EIC if they want to consider it. If they all say yes, then we'll set a public hearing, have that discussion. Then after that, they decide they want to do that, bring it back to y'all. And so it'll be four, presented four times, at least.
Roman, anything to add or ask?
I just wanted to clarify that there are three, I guess, types of projects that we can use for EIC. EIC funds direct contributions to business development. Second is quality of life, and third is participation in public infrastructure. The quality of life, I assume, is going towards the parking garage area? And then are we using the public infrastructure portion to go towards this?
I think you could, I think you could call that both, councilman, because it's, it is, it is beautification. It's a quality of life issue, because I, I think, you know, like Mike said, that those are working utilities, and it really serves to benefit, you know, beautifying that area. But it also does serve to benefit the quality of life, because it is going to help out with HHC after it's completed, which is kind of deficient in, in the power source, in the power that it needs. But I would say it does both.
I think the fact that it will help the museum, the history museum, and just do it all at the same time is good. All right, anything else, Roman?
No, that was it.
Okay, are we ready to have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the request to submit a funding application to the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for a downtown infrastructure and beautification project.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. All right, thank you. And next?
I'm just going to stay up here for a while.
All right, nine C, Shelley?
Authorization to submit a funding application to the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for Phase One of the Downtown River Trail Extension from the Tranquility Island Bridge to the Scenic Downtown Overlook, along with the environmental permitting for all phases of the Downtown River Trail to the G Street Bridge. And please note that Councilmember Herring has still recused, recused himself from this item, also due to a conflict of interest.
Yes. All right.
Oh, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Oh, we do, okay.
All right, so this is going to be the second of three items to ask to go to EIC. The history of this one, as everybody here already knows, is that EIC and the city have partnered to help with the creation of, of the River Trail. Most recently, and hopefully I'm not getting this wrong, the last mile was done with partnership with Shriner University in twenty twenty, and then kind of took a pause for this. During that pause, there were some master plan updates for, for the River Trail. And in May of twenty twenty-one, after EIC helped fund that concept and feasibility study, Hewitt Engineering came back with, with their cost estimates for that conceptual study. And that was, broke down into two phases, Phase One and Phase Two, and each phase seemed to have two parts, which I thought was kind of funny when I read through it, but, you know, it makes sense now that I'm doing it. So what we are here to talk about is Phase One. And as Councilwoman Clarkson mentioned, the original estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a few years ago for the K-Pub project, and now we're asking for a little bit more. Well, the twenty twenty-one May estimates for Phase One construction was eight hundred thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And I'm sorry to say it's not going to be the same number, but we'll get to that. So as all of you know, that, that green section in this map is that downtown section of the River Trail that wants to connect G Street to the library, to the Tranquility Island section of town. So that's a pretty big swath to take in one chunk. And I think everybody's looked at that and said, that's not something we want to do all at once. So what we want to do is shorten that and, and take Phase One, which is going to go from Tranquility Island to the library, and it'll go down to the Sydney Baker Bridge, and it'll go down just a little bit further to basically the overlook, is the area where that Phase One stops, okay? This phase, based on the estimates from, from the conceptual study, take about eighteen months. Be eight months of engineering design, two months of bidding and award, and about eight months of contracts, or construction, sorry. All told, to include the environmental and permitting portion, which is not really that much, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars total. The entire cost of that project now sits at just over one million dollars, one million twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty. So the staff request from council, should you be amenable to it, is to request funding not to exceed one million thirty thousand dollars for this project. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over.
Big number.
Yes, ma'am, it is a big number, and I wish I didn't have such a big number for this one. I can go out there and dig a little bit, and I mean, I can do some of that work, but I don't know how big a dent I can make.
But I tell you, after, oh, Labor Day weekend, when we were down there, and when you, you know, talk to people that, and they come out of town just to walk our river trails. I mean, it just, it's, it's marvelous. It's marvelous. So Brenda?
This is going to be running along where Arcadia is, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So starting at the, starting at the library, where the, where the new, you know.
Ramp.
ADA compliant.
ADA compliant ramp.
Starting there, on that side of the river, and edging along, and to go under Arcadia, and then kind of right, right there at the overlook is where this phase would stop.
Okay. Another question. At this time, no plans to put stairs from, from the River Trail up to the overlook?
No, that was really part of the conceptual study. We looked at that. Really, the financial feasibility of that in multiple locations was not going to be financially feasible. And so that's really when council made the decision to make the investment there at Tranquility Island for one of those primary ADA accessible, access. Certainly, you residents have access right now at the Scenic Overlook with the stairs that are there. Those are not ADA compliant, which was part of the investment, which was, you know, close to over six hundred thousand dollars for that alone.
Yeah. Okay, Kim?
Uh, no questions.
Roman? All right, are we ready for a vote? Somebody make a motion, please?
I will make a motion to authorize the request to submit a funding application to the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for Phase One of the proposed Downtown River Trail Extension, along with environmental permitting for all phases of the Downtown River Trail concept.
Hold that motion, and we have a speaker.
Can we still count it?
Yeah, just hang on to it. All right.
He's gone?
He's gone. All right.
My motion stands.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Kim seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. All right, thank you.
So you just got to be late on the agenda and wait everybody out, is that what it is?
Nine D, Shelley?
There he is.
Oh, here he, oh, here's Joe, that's right. He gets to come back, and he didn't leave. You are, you are, you are.
All right, authorization to submit a funding application to the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for a fitness court at Louise Hayes Park. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, it's Larry, and so.
You can see him out there.
All right.
All right, this is my last of three, quality of life asks that we want to take to EIC for consideration. So Blue Cross Blue Shield, along with the National Fitness Campaign, they put together, National Fitness Campaign has this thing nationwide, but Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas allocated a million dollars towards this project and awarded twenty cities across the state a fifty thousand dollar grant to go towards this fitness court. Had to, had to meet a whole host of criteria, and Kerrville was an ideal candidate for it. So in addition to the fifty thousand dollar grant that we were awarded by Blue Cross Blue Shield, staff approached HEB and asked them if they'd be interested in participating in this project, and they graciously said they would be willing to donate ten thousand dollars towards the goal. In addition, we do have a private donor who is interested in donating up to twenty-five thousand dollars towards this project. However, it's not completely in concrete for that one. So that's, there's a little bit of gray area there.
Is that contingent on anything?
Huh?
Is that contingent on anything from the city?
Uh, no, I think it's just, it, it's, it's been a while, kind of, we've been working through this process for a little bit, and so we don't want to make assumptions about that, and they're actually out of the country right now. So I just want you to remember that that's a maybe at this point, as we kind of work through what, what the ask is of EIC. So you have in your packets the total breakdown for what, you know, what this facility looks like. Kim Meismer was discussing this earlier when we wanted to apply for it, and so you saw the entire breakdown. Really neat-looking facilities, they're different. They have artwork components to them, which, which will be fun if the cuts folks want to get involved, if we want to put that forward as a project. And it, it is an interesting concept. So the funding that we've got so far, remember that was potential donors for that twenty-five thousand dollars. What our, what our estimates are is that we've got fifty thousand dollars from Blue Cross Blue Shield, ten thousand dollars from HEB. Our proposal is that we use twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from parkland dedication in that fund, and asking for not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars from EIC. Hopefully, only going to need seventy-five thousand dollars of that money. But in the event that, that doesn't pan out, that we have, we can, we can close that gap. There's the words. I'm forgetting how to talk today.
Make it happen.
Thank you. All right, total project costs on this is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Hundred and thirty-eight of that is the fitness court itself. They got to ship it over to us, about forty-three hundred and fifty dollars. The concrete slab, you know, when Ashley and I were talking about it, and I think with staff, we're, we're not sure we might be able to kind of lower that cost a little bit, don't know yet. But estimating that to be at twenty thousand dollars. And then this is turnkey installation. This is the folks coming in, putting all this stuff together. So from start of the meal to the end, twenty-five thousand dollars of, of their installation cost totals a hundred and eighty-seven three fifty. Same next steps, if you guys are amenable to the concept of recommending that to EIC for them to consider. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over.
Okay. My first question is, how, how were we picked as a city?
We had a fantastic application, and Kerrville's an awesome place. And I think we were just one of twenty that just shone above the rest when it came to, you know, what amenities we had to offer in our park already. It's, it's a, I mean, it's an effort to get people outdoors and our, and, and everything I've seen so far, from the park's master plan to the park's segregation department, to the city council, to all the investments we've got, we're a town that really likes to be outdoors. And I think we, we, we were able to show that in the application, and Blue Cross saw it, and they awarded us.
Is there, as far as maintaining it, do they hold up well? Have they in other places? Do we know what their lifespan is? Or that's not a, I don't really mean lifespan, but just overall maintenance?
Yes. So the outdoor, the outdoor equipment is, is not too dissimilar from a playground, right? So playground equipment has a useful life, say it's twenty to twenty-five years, something like that, before you need to really consider replacing that stuff. So I would think it would be roughly similar to that. So we had, in Live Oak, before I came here, we had outdoor fitness equipment, not exactly the same as this, but it was the same lifespan as we had for the playground equipment that it sat next to.
Okay. All right, questions, council? Roman?
Where are we looking at putting this?
That was my question.
Well, that's a good question. I think, you know, I think we're, Ashley, yeah, you want to speak to this? I'm only here asking for the money. Ashley's going to tell me where it goes.
Okay, so this will be going in Louise Hayes Park by the interactive fountain. So it'll be to the left of the fountain, if you're looking towards the River Trail, below the playground area. And so we chose this location as a central location, because parents can go there and workout while their children might be playing on the playground or in the fountain. And so it was just an ideal location, and we didn't have any underground utilities there that would interfere either. So perfect location for it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim, anything else? He took yours. Joe?
No.
Brenda?
No.
Alright, would someone make a motion, please, for something we've never had?
Authorize staff to submit a funding application to the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for a fitness court at Louise Hayes Park.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes. Do we need to uh, do we need to take cookies, brownies to EIC next time? Margaritas?
Yes, ma'am.
Bring it.
All of the above.
Okay, we are down to ten A appointments. Academy Kayla. Alright, do we have anyone who is going to speak to this? No?
So, I don't have a presentation, but we did receive six um, applications, um, that, here. We, we had actually really great diversity this year, we had um, O L H, Tybee, Ingram, and Center Point. So, we're just asking that you appoint them so that we can have another great year.
Um, Mayor, I'll go ahead and uh, make a motion to appoint the six applicants, which are Madison Collins, Grace Lynn Gurren, I think. Ellie Harper, Peter Lockwood, Corbin Lofton, and Riley Paxton.
That last name, we've heard before, haven't we? Uh, do we have a second? A second, alright, all in favor, raise your right hand, very good. And uh, you can tell her, Drew, we're delighted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Alright, we have one last appointment.
Two, actually.
Two last appointments, okay.
Appointment of city of Kerrville delegate for the twenty twenty-two Texas Municipal League T M L Annual Conference Business Meeting.
Alright, uh, do we need to say anything? I think we all have a good idea, what's what, okay.
This was something that I had requested again for this year, as I requested it last year. Um, and it's uh, something that I don't think Kerrville has had at um, T M L in quite a while, a delegate. And so I wanted to try to integrate that, integrate that in and, and give us the representation that, I mean, we, we have. By right as a member city of T M L, um, and I'll say, like I said last year, I'm familiar with the process. I'm, would like to put my hat in the ring and um, as a, to be considered as a delegate, familiar with the process. Um, I read through their policies, uh, considerations for this year's business meeting, um, and I attended the last one with Mayor Blackburn, so.
Okay, I was going to say Mayor Blackburn was our official last year, yes, so, um, any other thoughts, council?
Well, I would defer to you, Mayor, as who I would appoint, if that's something that, unless that's something you, you don't want to do.
I would be happy to go and uh, happy to do it, so, um, I don't know that we had done it in the past, and it, you know, had, had. Former mayors, but uh, uh, that would be fine, uh, anybody else here with ideas? Okay, so we've got, um.
So I'm, I'll, I'll move that, that we appoint Mayor uh, Black, uh, Mayor. Mayor Eichner, uh, as a, as our delegate to serve at the annual business meeting to be held during the twenty twenty-two T M L Annual Conference.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand, and Roman, you're welcome to go along. Alright, okay, we have one last one.
Appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Committee.
Alright, uh, Kim and Joe, you guys were the uh, interview team, what do you have for us?
You want me to take it? Alright, I will move that we approve um, Tammy Heathman to the Senior Services Advisory Council.
Second.
All in favor of Tammy Heathman? Good, it passes, alright, we have reached the end. Um, is there anything for uh, staff or future agendas?
One, I was looking at our pending agenda list, and we have on there, like we do every year, to cancel our meeting, our second meeting. In November, and our second meeting in December. What I would like to suggest. And staff, let me know if this is something that we've considered before, and a reason why we haven't done this. To, our meetings are established by ordinance, and it says we meet on the second and fourth Tuesday every month, six o'clock, unless council decides otherwise. My request for an agenda item would be to bring back an ordinance to amend that. So instead of bringing a resolution every year to cancel those two meetings, by ordinance, they're automatically canceled, so we don't have to do that every year. Canceling the, the second meeting in November, or second meeting in December.
Okay, take that.
Initiate that this year and, and start that, unless there's any reason why not to.
Take that under advisement?
Sure.
Replace it with a workshop.
We'll start budget workshops in November.
We want to bring that back, I don't know, next couple meetings or whatever, so we can, we don't have to even do the resolution this year.
Alright, anything else for the good of the cause? Alright, thank you all, thank you all for staying. Have a good, short night.
Lots of sleep, and that's it.
And we are adjourned.